I don't know what that noise is.
Oh, is it happening again?
Oh, no, I thought it was. I thought you were mute. Actually, it's not. It's not.
All right. Well, you know what to do.
Sorry.
But let me, but let me know.
Yeah, it's not doing it right now. So that's great.
I thought that I changed some settings at some point. So hey, John.
Hello, Cliff. You have settings? I don't know if I have any settings, but I just do that to make Clancy laugh at me.
There is some wet and heavy dense snow in Alta today. It's all time big building snow.
That is my favorite garbage to ski on with those 1980 Kestley scales, scales skis. Very forgiving. Not real fast, but very forgiving.
Good for, good for figure elevens.
That's all John does.
I just mostly do exclamation points.
Exactly. Or question marks.
That's on a good day. Three, six, seven participants already. Who do we have? I thought I was early and it's like everybody's already here.
Well, it's all, it's all the goody two shoes. You know, the people who are always early for class and sit in the front row.
Someday that will pay off.
Yeah, right. We're still waiting.
That's what they have heard. So how's your season looking? Are you full booking up?
It's looking good. If COVID doesn't slap us down, if the weather cooperates and COVID doesn't stop us down at the moment. Yes, it's looking good.
Just a reminder, you guys, we are broadcasting.
That's okay. I'll try. Thank you. I'll try not to say anything that I regret, which is very difficult for me.
I like to remind people. That's all.
I'll keep my filter on.
Polly McLean. Oh, the mayor. Now we're serious. Hello, Sherri Ridden.
Hi, John.
Hi, hello.
Ready when you guys are.
Hello, Elise.
Hello.
All right. Hello, everybody. I think we have a quorum. It is three o'clock. So let's call the work session to order. This is the virtual work session of the out the town council on Wednesday, November 10th, 2021. This meeting will be an electronic meeting without an anchor location pursuant to my October 27th, 2021 determination, which can be seen on the town of Alta website. Okay. We have two items on our agenda. Well, sort of three, I guess, two. Mo you with Altiskey area about the ability to use some of their special use permit for parking and we also have a contract to talk about with Interstate, the parking services vendor. The second item is a friend, the second set, whether that's a set of items. And then after we will shift to franchise agreement with Rocky Mountain Power. Let's see, we did have a, where did I put it? There's a staff report on parking. I'll probably ask Chris to talk a little bit about this since he wrote this staff report. Just say something about how we got here. Just a few remarks. You know, we were, we were needing to respond to some changes at the Altiskey List company is making to their parking plan. And the fact that they can, on their special use permit is about 90% represents about 90% of the parking and our community has led us to having to do some, some make some efforts to accommodate their shift. I heard, I've heard people say to me that the reason for the Altiskey Lifts company doing what it, making the shift that they're making comes back to our not supporting their effort to expand parking and somehow influencing the Forest Service not to agree to that expansion. That's, that's inaccurate. We didn't, we were not particularly enthusiastic about it either I as mayor or the town council. As I understood the reaction at the town council about expanding parking. But that didn't really matter. It was not determinative. What mattered was that the Forest Service decided that expanding parking was not consistent with their forest management plan. And so they turned down that request. What we're trying to do is create a simple, clear and manageable parking option for us. I don't blame people for being unhappy. This is a big change. And I don't know that there is a plan that can make everyone happy because of the amount of the great constraint on our parking. We may not make everyone happy. We may not make anyone happy. There's a way in which in a situation like this, making everybody mad may be an indication that we're on the right track because we're not playing favorites. People have complained to me and the other staff members. In particular, Chris and Mike Maury. And what the main complaint seems to be is this isn't working well for me. I haven't really heard a whole lot from people saying, here's a way to make it better for multiple parties. But all of that background is not really to the point. The point today is to address two questions. Does the council in the town council meeting that's subsequent to this work session want to authorize me to enter an MOU on behalf of the community? And does the town council want me to enter into a contract with the interstate parking company to be the manager of our parking permit system? All right. So with that background, Chris, I'm going to let you kind of walk us through this if you don't mind.
Sure. Yeah, I can. You know, say a lot of, a lot of what you just said with a little bit more detail, I suppose. So, you know, I did. I provided the staff report as I usually do, just as a, as a preview to everybody because you know, we just, it seems to help everybody get on the same page to have a preview and a general overview of content of some of these, you know, longer somewhat technical documents and you know, I would point out, you know, in, in the staff report, and I begin with, you know, a description of, you know, kind of where we sit with the, the the scope of the entire scope of the parking plan, a plan to allocate permits, et cetera. You know, like I described in, in the update. We have not identified any major changes to the plan we outlined last month that we are definitely moving forward with, but it's also you know, I don't believe we consider it to be absolutely final at this point. And all that being said, the, you know, the action items regarding parking that the mayor just outlined that are on the agenda in the regular meeting that we also have some time to discuss here in the work session. Do not really have an effect on the allocation. So that kind of big meat of the parking plan that we've been discussing the last couple of months is not necessarily is subject to these action items to the extent that without acting on the ordinance and MOU with Altiskey area and a contract with a vendor. It will be difficult or impossible to kind of implement. You know, a parking, a parking plan, a permit, a system of managing parking by permits. So you know, with that being said, I'll just offer a couple kind of key details about the three documents, the the ordinance. The ordinance is something that we are kind of backing into. A number of years ago, I believe, six or seven years ago, state law changed and we are, we're required essentially to pass an ordinance specifically authorizing the Alta Marshals Office to enforce traffic and parking regulations in quasi-public roads and parking areas. So better late than ever. This ordinance does speak specifically to the taking, the Alta Marshals Office, taking those actions within the ski area, especially use permit, which as the mayor just described, is virtually all the parking. It doesn't specifically address the parking enforcement that has historically and will ideally continue to happen on quasi-public roads and parking areas that belong to the Alpha Lodge or any other roadside private property owners that have like, you know, fractions of asphalt that people park on. So we may need to take further action to amend this ordinance or pass an additional ordinance granting that authority. I will acknowledge we never passed along an exhibit depicting those parking areas. I do have one. I produced it last night. So I can put that on the screen at any point. We can do it during the regular meeting when it's, when it's up for discussion. And I think Cameron and Polly will back me up if that's an okay way to do it. So when we get to that, I can, I can share that whenever it suits the council and the mayor, I suppose.
Can I, can I ask Polly or Cameron to let the council know what quasi-public roads and parking areas means as a matter of law?
So it's defined in the state code and we put it in the whereas is it refers, it's a little bit of a nuance here because it generally refers to private roads that are then being allowed to be used by the public and to be patrolled by the public. But we did verify, of course, that Altiskey List does have some privately owned parking area that is part of this as well as of course, the for, the land owned by the Forest Service, but basically private in the, well, it's its own little animal, right? That it's part of the special use permit. So it's under the control of Altiskey List.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure that that got stated in this, in this conversation.
Okay, Chris. So the MOU, you know, the MOU very specifically speaks to parking the town will manage this winter on the north side of Highway 210 on the special use permit. So this is just the vehicle for, for public parking, public overnight parking and other parking outside of the ski reservation program to occur on the sport special use permit in a defined area along the north edge of the pavement east of the Snow Pine Lodge, essentially. And we did provide an attachment with that document. So that's a fairly narrow document. Margaret did ask in an email that you know about, well, this, as a, as a general point for, for you all, that's certainly really important. We are still like, we need to, we will submit an application to the force for a special use permit to manage our program on forest lands outside of the special use permit. So the MOU is essentially what authorizes us to conduct this, to conduct this program on the special use, on the ski area special use permit. So our Forest Service special use permit will not apply on the ski area. And this MOU is essentially what gets us the rest of the way from the historic overnight area east of the post office, all the way up to the mouth of the village.
I think it might be valuable, especially for people who end up watching this, who aren't council members perhaps, to go ahead and put that exhibit up.
Okay.
I, I, I just, just, I mean, I think that a lot of people are quite familiar with what you're talking about, but I think having the picture sure be helpful.
So this is the, this is the attachment for the exhibit rather, as it's depicted in the document that, you know, we sent to the council and posted on the website. And, you know, as you can see, this is a not, not a super fancy map, but basically the bus stop sign depicts the western extent of the special use permit ground where we will be able to manage, you know, town managed parking. Again, east of that historic overnight lot across, across from the Snow Pine. So this is the park, this is the, the, you know, chunk of ground, the parking area that the MOU covers for us and provides us. So the MOU is our vehicle to manage a permit parking program in these areas. So.
Right.
Sorry.
I was just gonna say, and we'll have our own special use permit with the Forest Service for the Forest Service ground to the west of this that we're going to be parking on. Sure.
Perfect. That was exactly my question. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Yeah. And we, I don't know that we've drawn a map of that to date, but it's not a very big part of the, well, because those, because the U dot right away is on the special, is on the forest. We'll, we're going to be required to ask for a special use permit for everything that isn't on the special use permit of the ski area.
Or town property. So when we do get about drawing that polygon, we'll have to overlay the town property. So it's a patchwork, just like land status all over the place in Upper Little Cottonwood and elsewhere in Alta. But, um, but yes, I mean, the, you know, non-scaria permit National Forest System lands that happened to be under easement to UDOT for highway purposes. Yeah, that's a big, that's a big chunk. And, but it's not all, again, because the town owns a decent portion of the North Flagstaff lot. So. Um but it's not all, again, because the town owns uh a decent portion of the North Flagstaff lot, so. Uh I'm gonna stop sharing that for the time being. Um so finally, just uh you know, to address the interstate contract, um. I will acknowledge that Margaret um sent me a long list of good questions about the contract and um I did not, I kind of started to. Get into those um but I did not provide Margaret a um or. A res- a significant response other than to say I acknowledge them. I did forward um those questions to Cameron, who uh worked pretty hard on the contract. Um on our behalf uh with Interstate, so he's aware of kind of the general nature of your questions, Margaret. Um but you know, the interstate contract, I mean, I will observe and you know, Margaret uh had a lot of questions about. Um. Uh program elements and items, items in the contract that um were sort of boilerplate from. Other interstate parking programs and other contracts, um things like um you know, solar panel kiosks uh. We don't, we're not gonna have any solar panel kiosks, at least associated with the town of Alta program. Um we all acknowledge that that kind of infrastructure. Up here on the side of Highway two ten, given avalanche exposure and five hundred inches of snow a year and. Snow clouds and all that is um a bad investment and um my understanding of the Skyria program is that uh. It's intended to essentially push everyone to access the program online and in advance. So um. Whether that's exactly how our interstate program would work, but I don't, I can't say for sure, but we're not gonna have kiosks, just just for example. Um technology that could be, you know, used up here in Alta by Interstate sort of as part of their operating burden. Um includes scanners, I'm pretty certain, and that and you know, the vehicles and personnel and things like that. So um. You know, the contract does uh define a two-year term. Um it defines uh. You know, ways in in which the agreement can be terminated. Um it defines that we each retain fifty percent of the um. The net revenue from the permits. Um. And then it defines, yeah, this, there's a split that Margaret was attuned to um. In the way that violation revenue is is uh is distributed. Interstate retains ninety percent of the net revenue for the first five violations each day, and then the town and Interstate split um fifty-fifty thereafter. So. Um. Go ahead, Mayor.
Let me just clarify one part of the conversation with Interstate about that and how we got to that. Would that be useful, Chris?
Please.
Um so uh they don't, they don't end up entering into very many collection efforts at all. But um if they do, they're fairly expensive. And so um. We agree and and they're the party that is responsible for doing that. And so we agreed that for the beginning, for they don't expect to ever go over more than five a day. I don't think they expect to go to one a day on average. So we just agreed to try to hold that, keep them whole. Uh was the idea so that they aren't uh incurring undue costs uh. To to be partnering with us.
I just had some questions about that specific point with regard to the ninety percent collection fee on um violations. Is it a seventy-five dollar fee across the board that they're expecting at this point?
Uh my understanding is that that's seventy-five dollars, but if you don't pay it. Uh in some period of time, Cameron, you probably know this off the top of your head, uh it doubles to a hundred and fifty, I think, in two, is it two weeks?
Ten days.
It just seems to incentivize collection of fees that would really benefit them and not. The other parties involved in the contract, and I have to say, I was startled and surprised. They were attempting to enter a contract for an entirely new program that ties us in for two years. Why would we do that?
Uh there are clauses that we can uh get out of the contract. Ca- Cameron, do you want to say something about uh how. Committed we are?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So the the philosophy of the two-year initial term. Was because that was the initial term for the use of the ski areas, extra parking. Um it seemed worthwhile to at least take a stab at it for two years. With all the other agreements there, it would be a lot of work to redo those every year. So we tried to plan for at least some period of of. Working out the kinks. And then if it doesn't work, there is a termination clause that the town can um exit the contract with thirty days' notice.
But doesn't that clause have to be exercised because either we as the town or Interstate has to fail in some execution of their. Responsibilities? I didn't think it was free and clear based on my understanding of the contract.
Yeah, so that is uh there is a section that talks about if there's a breach that we have to provide notice or Interstate has to provide notice, and then. If they fail, either side fails to correct that breach, that that allows to terminate. There's also a section that allows the town to change the ordinance that implements the permit parking. And if that ordinance exists, then the wor- the town can withdraw from the contract.
And without penalty, Cameron?
Yes, it it essentially legally, it becomes an impossibility. For the town to perform a contract if there's no ordinance that allows the town to conduct the permit parking.
I I have an additional question about that in paragraph two, three. Um subpart B, it seems to me it suggests even with a thirty-day notice and then an additional thirty days. That if either party ag- doesn't agree to terminate, that the agreement continues. So it seems like the one party can hold the other party, that if they wanted to get out, we could hold them to it. Or vice versa, if we wanted to get out, they could hold us to it. Am I not reading that right?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's true, but I don't know that the contract continues. If there, if there's no ordinance that allows the town to conduct. Permit parking, then it can't continue by the contract. And so that's, that was the intent. To draft it the way it is.
Hmm. It just seems onerous that we would have to actually uh. Eliminate the ordinance to exit the contract.
And and that's true, entering a contract had places duties and responsibilities on both sides. And so. It it's rare that I've seen a contract where either party could walk away at a whim. But here there are conditions where we can walk away if the if the. If the authority for the town to conduct the permit parking ends, then they can terminate the contract. Because it's impossible for them to complete the contract. And and vice versa, you know, Interstate is locked into this unless. It becomes, you know, financially inviable for them. Then they can approach us and say, hey, you know, things have changed, there's been some event. So we we've tried to cover all of those eventualities, but I, you know, I'm at least satisfied and from everyone else that's reviewed the contract. There's enough uh flexibility that the town can respond to this as necessary.
I'm not sure I understood your uh earlier comment. Um and I'm sorry, I can't remember if it was you, Cameron, or. Uh or if it was you, Harris, about um that the two-year uh clause. Uh that it's a two-year contract, but there are clauses that say we can get out. And it was two years because that's the ru- the the ski area. Extra parking, initial uses, two years? I I'm not sure I understand. Um I completely confused by that.
Yeah, so the part of the town parking is the northern section of the highway on the north side of the road. And that section of the roadway is controlled by the ski lift. And so. The agreement at the time that this was all drafted was that the ski lift would allow the town use of the. North side of the northeast end of that highway, uh use of their. Uh special use permit for town parking. And so the term of that initial agreement was two years, and so we felt like that was a. A good benchmark to use to have the interstate contract because it would cover that same time period. And so. That that was the decision for why it was two years.
Yeah, so is that um is that an agreement that that's already in place, Harris? The agreement with the Skyria? Or is that part of the the current special use permit that we're reviewing?
So that's the MO, that has, that is in the MOU that we're uh need to talk about today too, that's on our agenda for the town council meeting. But but that's fair game for this conversation, Margaret, if there's something you want to say about that MOU, for sure.
Well, I I realize that we've only got um a few minutes left on this portion of the agenda, so. Um and neither Elise or Cliff have have been given an opportunity to say anything, so um I can. Reserve my comments to another time if that is better.
Well, let's see if Cliff or Elise have uh have something they'd like to. Say, Cliff.
Thanks. I was wondering about the revenue projections net of the. Operating expenses and I was wondering if if we had seen um pro forma. Projections of that um that would uh give us a kind of uh uh pro forma of of what those numbers might be.
Yeah, um I didn't open that. I I created a spreadsheet with an estimate and I I'll share the assumptions of it. Chris, do you uh? Now my. I'm not, okay, I didn't open that already. Hang on a second. Let me see if I can get that to open. I've been having some problems with this laptop today. I thought I had fixed it. Uh Chris, do you have that?
Uh not readily accessible, but I can start to look for it and I regret not being prepared.
Maybe then in the meantime, I'll ask about the MOU. It seemed to me and um to C. Or I'm sorry, to B, we talk about ASL um agrees not to designate more than sixty be. Vehicle parking users in the area on any one day or consecutive days during the operating period. Why not just say not greater than sixty period? Why is it um that we're further limiting that to a particular day? Or consecutive days? Um are we really in a position to say, yeah, there? If it's every other day, it's okay, why? So.
Oh, I I think I can answer that. Um if you have um sixty parking spaces and. You're gonna use them, um you can't be limited to sixty vehicles. Um there may be a hundred and eighty vehicles that are. Um have permit rights um to um here's those sixty spaces, even though. Only um sixteen maybe overuse many given time.
But wouldn't there be a way to do that, that rather than talk about vehicle, just say parking users? Because again, as as you pointed out, Cliff, that we do want to allow if somebody is not there, but. You know, a patrol person in particularly only comes these four days, but doesn't work these three days. We want to be able to transfer that to somebody else. I totally understand that, but I'm just talking about the number itself, sixty. Needs to be constant.
Yeah, there's no way that you can be transferring um passes from day to day. Um but I'll I'll um I'll uh let the um people who are involved in putting together um the agreement. Um take that further.
Chris, have you found that?
Um I found the top line estimate um thanks to Piper uh in our estimate based on. Um you know, our like three-day permit requirement windows.
Yeah.
Yeah, three-day.
What was that number?
And um you know, uh weekends, December through Easter weekend. Uh was thirty-three thousand seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, so Cliff, I'm sorry, I am not uh, my computer is not cooperating off and I didn't. I can't reboot it or I won't be on Zoom anymore. So um the the issue is uh. What what I did was I took two hundred and fifty dollars, multiplied it by the number of uh um seasonal permits. And then took twenty-five dollars and multiplied it by the twenty and multiplied that.
We seem to have lost the mayor.
Do you want to fill in, Chris, for what he was, that spreadsheet that he was trying to explain?
Um I I don't believe I can. I I it, you know, Harris has has owned that. I mean. Again, and I think we were, Harris and I were just describing the same thing. We have um a fairly narrow operating period. Um at this point, given our plan to um activate the program. Friday at eight AM and um suspend it Monday at eight AM. So um we've got, you know, these three days sort of periods of. Of um permit requirements being in place. And then, yes, we've defined this um seasonal operating period as. Um yeah, the first weekend being, I believe, the weekend of December third. Um we include the holiday periods, the ski area holiday periods, which um is essentially Christmas week or December. Twenty, December twenty-third through January's second or third, I believe. Um and then an additional Monday on um MLK and President State weekends. Um so. It's that times the number of um seasonal permits in our current allocation. Um which is somewhere in the neighborhood of. Two hundred uh and then assuming sale of twenty uh twenty-five dollar. Single-use day permits. Um assuming each of those sell once each day. Every day the permit, or the system is uh is operational and permits are required. So and there's uh it's, I. I think I'm reasonably confident that could happen. I also think there's a good chance that we wouldn't sell all those permits each of those days. Um so. If I think that revenue estimate might be a little bit generous, but um so. You know, from there, assume the town keeps half of it um for an amount of, you know, just under seventeen thousand dollars. Um that's the, that's the revenue to the town. So you think about Interstate's share in that and um. You know, their um their costs will come out of that, come out of that revenue. So.
Um y- yeah, and I'm I'm sorry, Chris. Um it would have been better uh for me to um. Take the time a couple of days in advance to um lay this out um. Um for you and the mayor, I did not mean to uh do this as an ambush. I'm really just curious and it's not, it's not a huge point, uh but I was wondering if we had a a pro forma. Of the um operating expenses that would um come off the top uh before that revenue split.
Well, I believe, I mean, the the one that sticks out to me is the special use permit fee, so um we will. Ha- we will um have to remit uh, you know, a percentage of the of um the revenue. Uh before our fifty-fifty split to the Forest Service. Um. And I'll leave it at that for now. Um.
Well, let let me just um mention that there there are some other pretty significant. Um operating expenses that come off the top um before the split happens. Um there's the uh the 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 big ones that jump out at you are the um employees and um. And the software um and uh and the vehicles.
Um that's true, but my understanding is that they cover those costs out of the their share of the revenue from the program.
Um really, I I I better reread that. I thought that the, I thought the revenues came off the top. Before on the split happened.
There are some expenses, uh the expenses that come off the top relate to the financial transactions for the credit cards and the. The ski pass, uh I can't remember what the term is, but there are financial card transactions, the employees, the software, the website. All of that is covered under Interstate's share.
Oh, really? Um I must have misread that. Um so um I'll um I'll I'll take that offline. Thanks.
The ski pass is like the tap and ski program. Um it's just some, I believe it's a third-party application. That they use to set up the interface and I. that they use to set up the interface and I don't know if that is actually going to be a part of any of the Alta programming. Um, so that is, yeah, that's like, I believe that's a third-party app. Um, so that, that will come off the top. The, the special use permit fee, I believe, is like three percent of revenue. Um, so that's not, that's not insignificant, um, on our end, but, um.
I was gonna say, I don't have any questions right now, but I know we probably should start talking about the Rocky Mountain Power things since we're going over time, but, um, I'll ask my questions during the town council session.
Excellent. I'm sorry. I apologize for my computer problem. Did you get the, uh, financial information you needed, Cliff?
Um, Mayor, it sounds like I may have been misreading, um, the agreement about where, uh, the operating expenses come off, so, um, I'll, I'll take that one offline and, and see if there's still an issue on that. Thanks.
Okay. It was in the thirty thousands is what we were expecting and that is, um, net after a, uh, fee to the Forest Service, um, they collect three percent is my understanding off the top and then we split the revenue with the vendor. All right, let's move to the franchise agreement.
May I ask just really swiftly, that's thirty K for the entire season estimated net?
Oh.
A little more. It was more in the thirties. I don't remember the exact number and.
Okay, just wanted to ballpark it. Thank you.
Thirty-three, seven, I think was the number that we came up for the formula that, uh, the mayor was describing when he lost his connection.
Did that come across? It was the, uh, okay.
Yeah, more or less.
Okay, thanks. Okay, um, let's, uh, let's move to the, um, Rocky Mountain Power franchise agreement. All of my, all the documents I had opened are gone too. I'm gonna have to reopen them.
I can help you, Mayor, where you need it.
Well, okay.
If they're.
Okay, so, um, I'm sorry, who is the staff person who put this, uh, report together? Was that you?
John, it's John.
Okay, John.
Okay, just a quick introduction. Um, we've got Brad Knowles and James Smock from, um, Rocky Mountain Power waiting to talk about the details of the franchise agreement. Uh, we've always had a franchise agreement with Rocky Mountain Power, which basically it's just an agreement to allow them to give us power as controlled and overseen by the Public Service Commission, uh, and of late, uh, collect, um, franchise fees. Uh-oh, I'm getting a weird feed. Franchise fees, uh, on those bills and then to provide us our service. Uh, those contracts or those franchises have always been for like ten years and they're pretty standard. Uh, five years ago, after a season of more than usual outages, the council was not real happy with the outages, so they felt that they wanted to engage Rocky Mountain Power more and have more intercourse, uh, and, and more interaction. So instead of ten years, the council chose to go with five years, just so we can stay at the forefront of Rocky Mountain Power's mind. Uh, they, uh, the Rocky Mountain Power and the council discussed numerous ways to solve and address the power outages so that we would get less interruption in service. Um, and, uh, Rocky Mountain Power got back to us on a number of those things. They're discussed in the staff agreement or the staff, uh, report. And what we're doing today is this, this franchise agreement expires February ninth. So we need to talk about this upfront, um, and I'm about ready to just turn it over to Rocky Mountain Power representatives, so they can talk about, they know, we've talked about the questions and the problems that we've had in the past. Um, they're ready to address what they've done to increase, uh, the reliability of the service, cut the outages, and there were a couple of questions like a onsite automatic off switch and/or a new line up the canyon that they can also address. But, um, after they address these problems and questions, you're open to ask them any further questions, uh, before we get to the actual franchise agreement, which we'll talk about in the regular meeting, but it's just, it's up in February and in February of this next year. Uh, we'd like to renew it. Uh, traditionally, it's been ten years throughout the Rocky Mountain Power region. They go twenty and even more years. Um, I think that we obtained our goal of getting their attention, uh, and they've been very responsive, quite reliable. So at this point, before turning it over to Rocky Mountain Power, I'd like you to think about when we do this franchise agreement, if we do it, and we can either do it today or next month, um, that we go ten years instead of five years. But, so with that in mind, I will just turn this over to Bradley Knowles from Rocky Mountain Power and James Smock, uh, so they can lay out, uh, the background of the franchise agreement, what they've done to improve, uh, service and eliminate interruptions, and then you can question them, uh, at will. So Brad, I hope you're there. I see him, but he's muted. As we all usually are in these, no matter, even though we've been doing it for a year. Maybe James, who can fill in for a bit while Brad's getting ready. Uh, oh, here we go, here we go. No, I'll stop talking.
Now it looks like Brad is frozen. Maybe it wasn't so much me as going on with Zoom.
You've got quite a bit of feedback there, Bradley.
John, I can't through.
Very choppy.
Am I coming through, John?
Ooh, now it's good. Nothing. You may have to wing it.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I may need I'm reboot, I apologize.
Bradley, if you want to email me the presentation, um, jen@townofalta.com, I can at least bring it up on my screen and share it if it's requiring too much bandwidth.
Can maybe turn his camera.
Can you hear me?
Maybe try turning your camera off, Brad, and see if that resolves the, a bandwidth issue, if that's the problem.
Is James Smock, are you, are you there?
James, are you on?
For now, I'm hearing you, Brad. I don't know.
Now you're, can you hear me now?
Feedback on myself too.
Okay, I'm just trying I need to hear, I know what the, what the issue is.
It can't be power, it has to be Zoom.
Oh, boy.
Well, James, if it looks like you're on. Am I muted? If we can't get Bradley's PowerPoint, if we would just go over some of the things and the improvements that you've done, like from the Brighton feed and everything you've done from the bottom up, like we talked about earlier, um, maybe as a start and then open it up to questions. We could go without the PowerPoint.
Right, and the PowerPoint maybe could be provided and just posted on our website subsequently unless it's somehow proprietary and not shareable that way.
I haven't heard a response from James.
I mean, either. Well, while those, while he's looking at adjusting his PowerPoint, we did meet Brad and James and I, and we talked about some of the questions that you all mentioned five years ago. Um, one of the things we talked about was an automatic off switch. Uh, there really is no such thing. Um, if, it, it would be like a mini, uh, power plant behind a chain link fence type thing. We'd have to have a physical place for that. Um, it would have to be maintained. Uh, you'd see it three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And if we lost power coming over from the top, uh, someone would still have to, from the power company, would still have to come up and physically inspect the lines to make sure that if there was a power switch over, say from the mouth up, that it didn't cause other problems and or fires. So the automatic switch is kind of a misnomer. Um, we also talked about improving some, someone had said, why not put a new line up the canyon, uh, from the, they call it the quarry feed from the mouth on up to Alta, and that line is very reliable now. Um, every time there was an outage or a problem, uh, that section of line plus additional, uh, footage of wherever the outage was had been replaced. So that's a reliable line now. Um, Snowbird is using most of that line. Another question came up. Snowbird has a new co-gen plant. So could we just, uh, contract with Snowbird somehow for power? We can't do that. Public Service Commission will not let them, uh, sell power. The good news about that is that if there is an outage to the town of Alta from the Brighton feed, which comes over from the Park City area, doesn't come up Big Cottonwood Canyon, it comes up from Park City. If there's an outage, almost everything at Snowbird and Alta can be powered. Um, it has to be managed, not everything, but almost everything can be powered from the line up to canyon. Another thing, the line over from, uh, the Brighton feed over from Park City, that had been scheduled to be totally replaced and upgraded with increased power, uh, this year. Uh, but, uh, COVID kind of put that on the back burner. That's gonna happen. Uh, we're not, we're not sure exactly when that's gonna happen. Um, what were some of the other questions? I can't remember some of the other questions, but I know.
I'm, I'm sorry. Can you say that again about which line is going to be updated soon, but wasn't because of COVID?
The, uh, I'm, the Brighton feed, and that comes over from Park City. It doesn't come up Big Cottonwood Canyon to Brighton. It comes over from Park City. It feeds Brighton and the town of Alta. Um, it was gonna be totally replaced with increased power. Another thing they did on that line, and I'm, I don't know about these things. James is the engineer and apparently we can't get him either. Um, but they've added a whole bunch of, um, sensors that are, are remote. So when there's an outage from the Brighton side, um, they can tell where it is. It'll contact them via cellphone, so it allows them to pinpoint where the outage asked here. So, and I know that they also had figures ready and I don't have them, uh, yet on the number of outages. But the, I guess the bottom line is, uh, they're, they're responsive. They want to give us the best service. Um, they're improving their system both from the bottom up and over from, uh, the Brighton feed. They would love to get this franchise agreement, uh, redone and instead of a five-year term like we did last time, a ten-year term, it's the exact same agreement. The one you got, I believe, is the blank one. Uh, we just penciled in ten years. There's only two differences in that one versus the one that we have now that expires in February and the franchise agreement that we've had for thirty years, forty years, is that this one gives another address for us to send, uh, any possible annexations. Uh, we have to send those to the power company so that they're aware and they can plan for future power. And then there's a, um, no jury trial clause in there, uh, if there's ever a, a lawsuit or litigation. Uh, there's a clause that we won't go to a jury trial so far as the law will allow. Doesn't totally preclude it, but um, there are limitations on it. I see Bradley again now that I've ruined his whole presentation.
Is that any better, John?
Oh, man, yes.
Ah, I don't know what, I, I, I ran out of options. I had to re- reboot. I, I apologize. I, I'm on the web version of this and um, so, uh, what, I'm not, I, I missed a few minutes, obviously, there, John. Um, do you want me to, uh, run through any of the kind of reliability and investment highlights? I don't know if James weighed in at all.
Uh, he, he did not, but John reviewed.
I couldn't get Jake either. I talked about the Brighton feed, the quarry feed, the increase, the update to the quarry feed, uh, the automatic switch, uh, which is basically a mini power station, uh, the, put the future upgrade to the Brighton feed, uh, the cell kind of pings to help identify and locate outages quicker. Um, just the things we talked about related to reliability and what you've done. So I didn't talk about the number of outages, but I think maybe there's a couple of people on the council that might want to start in with questions.
Well, we have about five minutes.
Since we're getting too close to the end.
Yeah.
So council members, questions, comments?
Sure, thanks. Thanks for the information and, and thinking on your feet, John. Appreciate it. And your staff report and thanks for being here, Rocky Mountain Power. Uh, any downside to us just keeping the five-year contract?
I'd only say, but butting in to Brad or butting in on Brad and James, the same thing that Cameron said, well, like with the, with the interstate contract, the only downside is, um, you know, we'll have to do this again in five years instead of ten years. So and, and maybe certainty with Utah or, um, Rocky Mountain Power, but I would say no.
And to, to that, if I could, John, weigh in, I, you know, the, the primary purpose really of these franchise ordinances is to provide, you know, a land rights to the company. That's really the purpose for, with all of our communities, so that we can place our equipment within public right of way. Uh, as you know, John, the, the town of Alta has very little, uh, right of way, which kind of whittles down the, the purpose of this agreement to be, um, really, um, uh, you know, again, to, to operate within the town's right of way, which there isn't much of. Um, I, I would say, uh, you know, to to sort of, uh, make this as efficient as possible or to, to eliminate the, uh, the several months, uh, sort of the administrative um, burdens, if you will, of going through this process. We, uh, we, we like to, I mean, we pride ourselves in the, in the, the community management aspect of this, um, to where if situations arise, or if even there's an opportunity or a need to enter into a separate agreement, um, or address other issues that may arise as they do, uh, you know, we can do that separately and we can engage, you know, regularly to address any of the town's concerns. Um, the, the franchise ordinance really isn't typically, um, the type of instrument where, uh, you know, to be a catch-all for, for all items, uh, Rocky Mountain Power. Uh, we kind of, we like to keep it streamlined and, you know, with a singular focus. So that, that's my, uh, uh, you know, what I would say to that really is it just, um, it allows us to operate continuously and, and address issues as they arise, uh, because it, you know, you'll need to, we'll need to communicate far more frequently than once every five years and once every ten years.
Right, and I apologize. I left out the big part. I mean, the franchise agreement is for, to allow you to use our rights of way and we don't have any. I mean, I'm not sure the DOT even has any in Alta yet. I know they're still working on that, but so it's not if we don't have them, we don't talk, or we can't get improvement or response, but, uh, but it's, it's a little different in Alta.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll just throw in that I appreciate the efforts to increase the reliability of the service that, um, you would have, uh, explained to us, uh, but that John did explain to us.
We do. We've, we made some improvements over the, just the pass over into the Brighton substation recently, just this summer. Um, we've got some. Um, we've got some wildfire mitigation work coming up in the next uh 18 to 24 months. A wildfire is, is, is huge. It's key for us in the company. We're making lots of investments to keep the canyon safe. Um, and like I said, I, 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 I would invite any of you and, and John as well, you know, where, where there are, if we see an uptick or concerns in reliability, uh, I'm your guy to help engage with our local ops group and uh, find out what the boots on the ground see and, and help you through that.
Okay. Is it possible, um, particularly, and, and it's not unique to Alta, but the watershed provisions be taken into consideration? I mean, about growth inhibitors, I don't know what Salt Lake City has, uh, Public Works has to say about growth inhibitors in the watershed.
Yeah.
And so.
Margaret.
Ours.
Yeah, Margaret, I appreciate that comment. I did see that on the, uh, on the notes to John, uh, or the, the, in, in some notes, but uh uh, we, so we're, we're essentially uh operating under a Forest Service permit. I mean, that, that's really our land, uh, our license to operate our facilities is primarily with the US Forest Service. Um, we have, we go through a environmental uh impact study with the Forest Service where that's all reviewed. If we, if we don't have that permit in place, we don't use the, the herbicides whatsoever. Um, if we have it in place, they're, they're monitoring that. Um, I know they went through a process fairly recently. Um, so
And the forest is tied to Salt Lake City Public Utilities and the Health Department related to watershed protection, so it's not going unnoticed.
That's correct. I, I, I will tell you, we, i- if we do use them up the canyon, it's, it's very little. I, I don't think our, our crews really use herbicides up there. Um, uh, but, but if they do, it's, it's, it's within the, you know, the permitting process, the environmental impact study process with Forest Service.
So the last thing you probably saw as well was my uh request that uh individual customers be notified of planned interruptions rather than something posted on the gate?
Yeah, and, and Margaret, I will say that we, um, the posting on the gate, I, I dare say, I, I hope, believe it was a, would have been a one-off type situation. Uh, we, we do, uh, and, and you'll, you'll have to provide feedback if, if the town is, is seeing that more frequently than not, but we, we have a protocol out of our, our metro operator, sorry, our Jordan Valley Operations Center to call folks. Um, we'll leave door knockers, you know, where possible. But we do, where it's planned maintenance, we provide, um, uh, it's typically several days or, or at least a week notice, you know, where there's emergency interruptions, those can be a little more tricky, of course. Um, but I'd, I'd love the opportunity to address any of those, uh, if those are repeated type of observations uh where a note on a gate. Um, and then sometimes it, it's a, it's a last resort. I mean, I've, I've heard that from operations folks where they maybe haven't been able to find a phone number or couldn't leave a message. They might do that as a last resort. But I, I have a, a close relationship with the operations managers at our Jordan Valley Center. It's right off the freeway in Draper there. And would love to address and work with the town to ensure that everybody's being notified properly.
So we're, we're going to have this, this is on the agenda um for the main meeting. Um, at quarter after four is what we're expecting. We'll see how much public input we have at this um meeting. So um, are you uh planning to stick around for that or are you um done for?
I, I'd be happy to. Listen, it's not every day you get to attend the famous town of Alta's uh meeting, so however long you'd like to have me.
Well, I'll tell you what, they're public. You could come once a month if you wanted.
Well, yeah. But I'm a presenter too, so.
That's, well, that's true. That's, that's once every five years or once every 10 years.
Yeah, you're right. They're open meetings, but still, I love your backdrop.
Okay.
And one other quick thing, I know we have 30 seconds maybe, is I had a question about, is, you know, there's a problem I hear in other areas with um vegetation management and cutting of, of limbs and trees. Uh, we've never had a problem up here. The people that are hired by, I mean, they have an arborist, certified arborist. The people that have been hired by RMP always come up to the office and let us know they're gonna be going around. And then they go to each individual place and talk to the homeowners before they start doing any chopping. So um, at least in the office, we've never heard a problem and people have no qualms calling if they have.
Well, I appreciate that. We're very, we're extremely conscientious of the work we do up the canyons. And again, just invite you, if you see something that seems off, uh, let's engage and, and our folks are typically very responsive.
Okay. Well, thank you. It's four o'clock. I'm gonna suggest that we take uh one or two minutes and then we start the main town council meeting.
Mayor, we have a public hearing.
Okay, I see. Okay, I'm gonna suggest we take one or two minutes and start the public hearing.
Thank you.
Little bit of a raft of Zoom problems there.
Yeah, Mary, you broke Zoom.
Uh, gotten my money's worth, that's for sure. Maybe I wore it out. All right, um, Polly, will you uh want to say something about why we need to have a um public hearing right now?
Sure. So state law requires a public hearing for the quasi um governmental parking, so.
It's a very specific requirement.
Yes.
All right, um, let's see, we have, uh, Margaret, I see. Okay, so the town council is all back. Good. All right. So do we, do I need, I guess we need a motion to, uh, well, do I call the main? I don't call the main meeting to order first.
Um, no.
Okay, so, uh, do we need a motion?
No, just you can.
Just declare it open. Okay. Okay, so I, I am uh opening the public hearing of the, uh, at the Alta Town Council uh Wednesday, November 10th, 2021, to discuss ordinance 2021-09 regarding traffic enforcement on quasi-public roads and parking areas. Um, since this is a public hearing, uh, I am um assuming that the next step is to see if there is, there are any members of the public who would like to address us.
And Mayor, I'll just add, just as a reminder to folks, um, I'm gonna call in a handful of folks here that there is also citizen input in the regular part of the meeting. So we may, we're gonna call in some of these folks twice, but I want to make sure they get their voice and where they need it, so.
And for now, this has to do with this uh ordinance.
Correct. So comments should be made specific to ordinance 2021-09. And then in the regular meeting, they can comment on whatever they like. Uh, Del Draper, I have um enabled you to speak. I wasn't sure if you wanted to make a comment on this.
Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
No, I'm looking at the map attached to the MOU. And it basically covers that area on the north side from Snowpine Lodge up to where the Summer Gate is. And an awful lot of that parking is not overnight parking. So I don't know if there's some plan to turn that into overnight parking or not, but uh, because that's not overnight parking, Alta needs to distinguish between day, day users and those people, those members of the community who need to park overnight and, you know, sign that area appropriately. Um, I know that Alta is giving Alta Ski Lifts the right to manage 60 of these spots in this area. And I don't know where that is, and I'm sorry if I, if I'm confused here and it just makes it harder to make the point, but if Alta is giving these 60 spots to Alta Ski Lifts where there's no overnight parking, that makes a lot of sense. Alta Ski Lifts can use that for its uh $25 a day or however they want to handle their recreational use. But if the town is giving 60 spots up in Grizzly where there's overnight parking to Alta Ski Lifts, I think that's a real problem. It's doing a real disservice to the members of the Alta community, because by my count, they're really only about 60 or so overnight spots up there in that area. And we'd really be worse off than we are in the current system, best plan. So again, I'm sorry, I don't know which way you're doing it, but I just point out that half that area is not allowed for overnight parking, and that makes a big difference on how uh uh the public is impacted depending on whether the 60 slots going down the ski lift are in that no overnight parking area or whether you're planning on giving those uh slots to Alta Ski Lifts to fill up with lodging with Alta employees.
So, so this hearing is not really, Del, I, I mean, I don't mean to cut you off prematurely, but this hearing is about a uh particular issue, which is, uh, the ordinance is to allow the town to enforce uh uh parking regulations on quasi-public roads.
Well, I'm sorry, I, I, and I'll stop here, but I did think that was germane, because how you enforce that depends on whether it is overnight or non-overnight parking. So I thought the comment was germane to the ordinance. And I, I will stop and keep the rest of my comments on the parking for the uh citizen portion.
Hey, thank you. Jen?
Yep. Next, I am going to call on Evan Tobin. I wasn't sure if you wanted to comment on this ordinance or not.
Yes, I would.
Okay, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'm just totally unclear as to what about with ACE events? People that want to go to the shallow shaft for dinner, do they have to pay $25 parking just to go to dinner?
Yeah, uh, I, I'm, I'm sorry, um, but that's, that's not what this ordinance is about. This ordinance doesn't really address uh any of the details of the parking plan for permits. I mean, we're welcome, I, I welcome your comment, but this, we're, this, this hearing is about the ordinance itself.
And I would add, Mayor, that the ordinance really has a lot more to do with Alta Marshal's Office operations in the main ski area parking lots. Authorizes the, eh, the Marshal's Office to do essentially what it's done historically in the parking lots, and we should have passed an ordinance like this in order to comply with state law several years ago.
I'm not sure if, I'm sorry, I'm wondering if now it might be a good time to show the map you talked about earlier, Chris? Maybe that would help the citizens um and, and the council understand what area we're talking about?
Does that make sense? Is this a good time for that?
Uh.
I think, I think the map is helpful. That's an exhibit to this ordinance, so.
Right, right. I can go ahead. Okay. So here it is. Now, so you can see, uh, it's narrowly tailored um to areas on the special use permit where the Alta Marshals operates to enforce traffic and parking regulations in quasi-public roads and parking areas. The special use permit includes the, that parking area west of the Ruster Lodge and east of the Alta Lodge private property. Um, it includes the Wildcat Parking Lot in the entrance ramp to the parking lot uh from the highway, and it includes essentially all the asphalt east of the Snowpine Lodge property boundary.
So basically, this is letting us legally do what we've been doing.
Correct.
Evan, I still have you enabled if you wanted to make a specific comment to this ordinance based on what you just heard.
Okay, well, no, based on that, this is my only other comment was that the area up near where the Alta toll booth is, the signage last year, how that became it was exclusive area beyond a certain point that would just for cabin owners. Is that gonna continue?
So Evan, I think you want to make that comment in the regular part of the meeting, unless it's specific to this ordinance. Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, you can mute me again.
Okay, Jen, anybody else?
I am gonna check in with, um, nobody else has made a request, but I am gonna check in with Mike Mon to see if he had any comments on this ordinance. Mike, did you want to say anything?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, we are supportive of this ordinance moving forward. As I said, it's, it's just really formalizing what is currently being done has been in the past, so I'm supportive. We're supportive of it.
Thank you. And if there's anybody else that I didn't call on, um, I don't, everybody else kind of informed me that they didn't want to speak, but you can raise your hand if I've missed you.
I'm not seeing any of the attendees do that.
No, I think we're okay.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to, let's, uh, so then the next step would be to close the public hearing. So um, let's do that. We'll close the public hearing and I'll call the regular town council meeting of uh Wednesday, November 10th, 2021 to order. Um, I've already referred to the uh, this being an electronic meeting without an anchor location based on my October 27th, 2021 determination. All right, now we have an opportunity for citizen input on whatever the citizens would like to have their input uh about. Um, please uh uh, keep your remarks to two minutes.
Okay, so I have a shortlist again, some of the same folks we just heard from. Um, if anybody else wants to comment, please raise your hand. First, I am going to call on Del Draper. There we go, Del. I think we can hear you.
Hello again, Del. I'm not hearing you yet, Del.
I, I think he muted himself after I unmuted him, so I think we're just going back and forth.
Thanks, Jen.
There you go. We hear you. Thank you.
First apologies if I misunderstood and gave my comment that belongs here in the, in the ordinance portion. Uh, I still, just to reiterate, I think it's a, a real valid point that when you look at the parking that is east of Snowpine, a large portion of that, probably the majority of that parking is not overnight parking. So that helps me understand why if, if Alta is trying, if Al, if the town of Alta is planning on, you know, using those, what are day slots only, uh, to collect $25 per skier, that may help me understand why they're going that route. Uh, it seems to me the more logical thing would make sure that the 60 spots that go to Alta Ski Lifts are in that area without parking. And in fact, if you, if you gave away the overnight parking of 60 spots up there to Alta Ski Lifts, uh, we're in a worse position uh than we were before under the first come, first served system that exists. Um, secondly, I'd like to s- Secondly, I'd like to just reiterate, I I sent a letter and I I hope all the council members took the time to read that. One one point I have is that I use my cabin intermittently, and I am happy to uh be involved in some system that allows me to signal when I'm not using it and let somebody else use it. So if that is an Alta system where I can say, I won't be up this weekend, therefore, you're you could let Charlotte Nebiker or some other user have more than one stall, that's fine. If there's a way I can set that up without involving Alta and do that with Charlotte Nebiker, I would also be happy to do that. Uh, third point is just going back to a comment Sheridan made earlier. It seems to me that if the MOU is for one year, the agreement with Interstate should be uh for the same term. I know there are outs in there. It seems like a very awkward procedure from a contractual standpoint to have to withdraw some ordinance before you could actually exercise an out in the contract. From a contracting basis, it seems like those should both be the same term. And that is the end of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dell. Don't see the next. Evan Tobin, um, and just a reminder that you guys have uh three minutes for public comment.
Okay, uh, so now the question that I also posed in the wrong part of the meeting. Uh, so when there are ACE events uh and that parking, if it was on a Friday or a Saturday, or if I wanted to go up and go to dinner at the shallow shaft and park my car, am I allowed to park or is a parking permit required, a twenty-five-dollar parking permit required to park where we always parked? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you. Um, let me give you a couple of of thoughts, Evan. First, um, the Alta Shuttle is going to be running until ten PM uh uh at night uh this winter, so you wouldn't need to park if you were coming from someplace in Alta uh to another place in Alta. Um, my understanding is that a shallow shaft in particular won't be open, but we did allocate, we do have spaces for um the businesses that will be open, so if you wanted to, you needed to run up and drop off a pair of skis at the DPH, or you wanted to uh, for example, you, there is going to be parking available for that uh is the intention. Um, but uh it may be that uh this this requires some adjustment on the nights of the week that some of these events uh occur.
You you could also park on the south side of the road because there's not gonna be permitted parking on the south side of the road in the evenings.
That's right. Thank you, Elise. That's a good point.
Oh, there isn't? So there are hours for this parking? Because that wasn't clear in any of the stuff that I read.
The uh, the town of Alta permit uh plan that is on the table at the moment, although we haven't finalized it exactly, would run from eight AM Friday until eight AM Monday. But the, because we do have, we do have overnight parking uh in the town of Alta that is on the town under the town's management. But the south side of Flagstaff, if you were going to dinner at one of the lodges, uh, as Elise just said, would be available to you.
Okay, so I wasn't, I wasn't clear on that at all. So the south side is fine. If I wanted to drive up and go to Snow Pine or the Rustler for dinner, the Rustler has their own parking, that that parking that was on the quasi-map for Rustler, that is actually Rustler's parking?
No, it is on the special use permit of the Alta Ski Lifts Company, but the Alta Ski Lifts Company permit uh uh program will not include evening and overnight parking. Um, not, you won't be able to park overnight on the south side of Flagstaff, but uh there wouldn't be a restriction is my understanding of how the Alta Ski Lifts is going to run that. The important thing to distinguish is, it's important to distinguish.
I'm gonna mute you, Evan. Your time is up. Sorry. Thank you. I think I hope you got your questions answered or. Um, and then, Mayor, we have one more comment that Piper is going to read um for us that was submitted.
Piper, thank you.
Yes, this message comes from Roger Bark. Um, he said that in September, we noticed a couple of characters in a beat-up truck hanging about our neighborhood and tossing debris out the window. On our way down the hill, we encountered Deputy Brian and advised him of what we saw. He investigated, found they had a record of bad behavior and indeed were not respecting the surroundings in the way one would like. They left. And then here's the best part, without any prompting by us, Brian called and gave us a rundown of what had happened. It's easy to forget how lucky we are to live in a town with a public safety department where the cops know the townspeople and the people know the cops. There is a sense that we are all in this together to look out for and respect each other. I doubt this would have happened if those services were provided by an impersonal countywide police force. Thank you, Marshal Mori, and your deputies for setting this up and keeping it this way.
Thank you, Piper. And I do want to just point out, we have a handful of town staff members that are on as attendees um that did not request to speak, so if you've had a change of heart, please raise your hand really quickly so we can allow you to make a public comment, but I believe you're here to just watch the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Thank you, um, Dell and Evan for your comments and uh Roger for sending in that note. I I'll just say here, here to your comments about the police or or Marshal's Office is um a great asset to our community. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on um the ordinance designated twenty twenty-one oh ten Rocky Mountain Power Franchise Agreement. Is there a motion to adopt that ordinance?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, that was uh moved by uh Elise Morgan and uh seconded by Cliff Curry. Discussion.
Um, some things that I didn't get a chance to ask uh Brad during our work session related to um, I guess, boilerplate in their uh documents, and that was uh related to damages that we uh put in there in addition provision that they would be uh restored as soon as practicable. Obviously, they can't be restored if they can't get to the to the ground, but um, it again, for Rottershed Regulations, and it may be that the Forest Service provisions are adequate. Um, but it seems to me that would be something that would be appropriate for all uh Rocky Mountain um installations in the the Wasatch Mountains or or canyons so that it wouldn't be unique to Alta. So that was in uh paragraph uh eight point four. Um, if if Rocky Mountain Power uh causes damages, and so my suggestion was to add the phrase as soon as practicable.
Yeah, and and is it appropriate for me to to address that directly then?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so um, and this is uh eight point four refers to uh Rocky Mountain Power, if Rocky Mountain Power causes damage to or alters the public way or public property, uh Rocky Mountain Power shall at its own costs and expense and in a manner reasonably approved, replace and restore in as good as condition as existed before the work commenced. Um, I don't, I I talked to my uh my attorney briefly about this, and his thought thought was sort of that it's a, you know, it it's sort of how we operate when we're restoring power and also, you know, if we were to cause any damage. And again, going back to the concept of there's really not a lot of right-of-way. Um, uh, and then I guess public property could be, you know, a vehicle or anything on there. It it's just that we believe that that's sort of implied through through that um through the course of our business, whether we're restoring power or uh, you know, needing to go through the process of uh of having enforcement on that provision. Uh, we'll replace it at our own costs and expense in a manner reasonably approved by the town. Um, I I mean, I'd be happy to take that back and see if that's something we could add into the agreement. Um, but that that was kind of the the belief was that it's sort of implied in our business practices.
Yeah, I I'm I'm not sure that I'm pointing the finger at Rocky Mountain Power uh at all. It's just that we have seen in Alta that some things can take year over year over year before things are actually rectified, and so I just thought, you know, if we put in there as soon as practicable, obviously, a pandemic comes into play sometimes and things get extended, but um it didn't seem like that was an onerous um suggestion, but it would just put both of us on notice that this is something that each of us consider to be important.
Right, and and I, and and the distinction there also, it maybe it's perhaps important that that, you know, again, referring to public way or public property, not necessarily our own facilities, is is that is that clear in in your mind that the distinction there between uh, are we talking about a power pole, say, or or something that's affecting the service to the residents, or are you talking something sort of unrelated to the actual uh uh Rocky Mountain Power facilities and ability to deliver power? Uh, you know, a a roadway or what have you, something that's not?
No, my my concern was not a a power interruption as a damage, but the damage of the power pole falling and ripping up whatever. Um, so damage that was contributed by the electrical facilities, not damage as a result of of a power outage or.
Okay, un- understood. Yeah, yeah, I I think it's, yeah, we're we're clear. So, yeah, again, um, I I'd be happy to, I I'm not authorized to make the the changes here on on the spot, the contract. Um, I'd be happy to uh sort of see if that's something we'd be able to work in uh with the legal the legal group here.
I mean, could we revisit it? Um, either the the council, or would that be potentially acceptable to you for us to um see that language coming back and either authorize the mayor, and this is, I guess, a question for for council and the mayor, to sign it? If that's in there, I could support that, uh, and if it wasn't in there.
Sort of in a.
Yeah, preemptorally be able to put that uh there so that it could just be done rather than having to come back to the council for for another.
Yeah, sort of, approve with conditions kind of concept. I I, yeah, I'd be willing to do that. I I think that's, yep.
Rum, can can you remind us what the uh expiration of the existing? Oh, it's February ninth, twenty twenty-two, okay. Any other comments? All right, um, so we have a motion on the table. I'm not sure, uh, Margaret, if you are interested in asking for that motion to be post action on this motion to be postponed to a future date, or if what you want to do is amend the motion uh and 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 move forward now. That's uh your choice, I think.
Um, I I would move to amend the motion uh that the town council approve the uh ordinance for Rocky Mountain Power Franchise uh twenty twenty-one oh ten under the condition that uh section eight point uh, what is it, eight point four um include the phrase uh following damages that it would, uh, let's see. Um, so the the provision would say Rocky Mountain Power shall perens at its own costs and expense and in a manner reasonably approved by the town and of perens, and as soon as practicable, replace and restore uh it in a condition, in as good a condition as existed before the work commenced. So it's merely that the the phrase as soon as practicable before the word replace in section eight point four.
Is there a second to that motion to amend the main motion?
I'll second.
Okay, um, just one question about that. If Rocky Mountain Power comes back and their attorneys say they don't want that, we'll we'll have to have to come back with this with that understanding.
Uh, let me, Mayor, could I please offer an amendment to the motion to amend um that the language would be as soon as reasonably practical? That's my motion.
Why don't we uh see if Margaret's willing to just kind of put that language into her amendment, so we don't have too many amendments on top of amendments?
Yeah, I I am uh I am willing to uh.
Say as reasonably practicable? Okay, all right, um, any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, so we'll we'll have to, if they reject this idea, we'll come back. Otherwise, um, we'll go ahead with this. That's how I'm understanding what the import of this is. All those in favor of amending the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, good. That was uh everybody, and then uh, so so now the main motion is up for any further discussion.
I wonder if we might consider sorry for the feedback, just having a five-year rather than ten-year term, I can't see much of the downside and having a closer relationship or just checking in more often seems advantageous to me.
Um, I guess, Brad, you could, if you don't mind, you could weigh in on that, and then maybe John could too.
Yeah, I I mean, you know, this is something that the the town um could decide, uh, you know, again, we these are frequently, you know, twenty twenty-plus-year agreements just uh to ensure that you know, we're have a document that we can uh work with longer term. Um, i- it's also sort of key for the town to think about what, you know, what are the alternatives to um uh, wha- what's the what's the motive, I guess, in the in wanting to go shorter rather than longer? I can't fully ans- answer that. Um, because again, I I've to engage regularly is is kind of our style, just to ensure needs are being addressed, and perhaps John can attest to that to me and my predecessors just that have worked with the town. Um, uh, but yeah, that's that that's all I would say.
Yes, I can attest to that. Chad, Lisa, now Brad, I mean, they're easy to contact, easy to engage. I don't know quite what to say about the ten, it would, it makes more sense to have a ten-year thing that would not preclude us from uh calling them every week if you want to. Um, and there's also an outage. There's an escape clause in the agreement. Um, so if we're having a problem, we can definitely get their attention and discuss it.
I mean, if we have a problem and we were to try to not renew this or pull out of the agreement, I don't know that we have an alternative supplier of electricity, so it's a little bit of a uh symbolic in some sense, it seems to me. Sheridan, are you interested in making a motion to amend the motion that's before us? The motion before us is to.
Those arguments. I'm sorry, please go ahead.
I was just gonna review what the motion was, but go ahead. I'm fine, and go ahead, please.
No, I I just wanted to have a discussion, and and those arguments uh make a lot of sense to me, Brad and John, so thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you for bringing it up.
All right, all those in favor of adopting uh ordinance twenty twenty-one oh ten Rocky Mountain Power Franchise Agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
I think that was every, okay, I think that was everybody. Good. All right, thank you, um, Brad. We will move forward. Uh, we're gonna wait to hear from you, I think. That's the next step about that additional contingency. John, you can coordinate that.
Yes, I will.
Okay, all right.
And thank you very much.
That's that's correct. I don't know if I was muted.
Okay, sounds good. All right.
Thank you, down, council and mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item, and I'm glad that you stuck around because that was helpful to have that conversation. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is uh Altoski area update uh with Mike Maughn.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Mike.
Hear me? Good. Uh just a little update, uh you know, we're continuing to prepare for the. Winter seeding, our target opening date is the twentieth, week from Saturday. Starting to get a fall a little bit in question. Um. You know, we've had some natural snow, but very little cold temperatures to be able to make snow. In fact, just. While I was listening in the work session, I heard our snowmaking system fire up and it was a sweet sound to hear. Because we are, we're making snow. Hopefully, we'll make some uh part of the night where. Temperatures aren't looking good for the weekends, so we'll get a little window here. Um but you know, we, this last storm we had just overnight, we got eight inches of snow. We now have a thirty-two inch base. Um we opened last year with a twenty-two inch base, but the big difference between last year and this year is. You know, we had made a lot of man-made snow by this point in time. So we'll see uh where that goes, but we're uh we're continuing to. Get staff here, get them trained. We're going through all our orientations and such. We are. Like most of America, we're uh we're really hurting in our food and beverage area. We're maybe only fifty percent higher. For food and beverage. And uh so we we may have some some unique circumstances for food and beverage. We're looking at opening the season with uh almost back to normal operations outdoors. No, uh no Ghost Maze lines, we'll load lifts at their full capacity. Um but indoors will be some encouraging masks. Um and we'll still have a lot of the sanitation protocols and and barriers and such in place as we. We go into the season. Our main focus is to try to keep keep our employees healthy and working. You know, it's it's it may even be more challenging than last year where. Now that we see that even the those that are vaccinated are. Becoming infected and in many cases infecting many others because they don't even know that they're they're carrying, that they've become infected. Uh we're seeing more and more reports of that within the industry and within the valley, but uh. We're continuing, we'll work with that and see where it goes. We're just hoping to get open and get people skiing and enjoying the outdoors. The uh, you know, the big challenge that uh with the big lift we've had this this year, you know, we completed our projects, we talked about them last year, but the big thing has been this. This big change of moving from just first come, first served parking to a parking management system of paid uh with paid parking reservations. You know, just as as a reminder, the bottom line is, you know, we've gotten to the point in time and. When there are certain times of the the year, there is more. Demand to recreate Little Cottonwood Canyon. Then there is available parking. And uh we saw that last year, fifteen days, we we had to close and turn around people for. You know, thou- you know, hundreds and thousands of people got turned around, which was very difficult on our people and very hard when, you know, you had sold pass holders product. They expected to use it and you couldn't provide them a parking space. Um you know, we also had probably twenty days last year where we were fuller than we would have liked to have been. And parked every spot we could in the town of Alta within the ski area and which created, you know. Some safety and also some congestion concerns there. So that that led us, you know, that's the primary reason. Yep, the other issue we've run into is. Due to the high number of pre- people coming early in the morning. Uh they're interfering with snow removal and their ability to safely remove snow. And there were several days last year where we had to stop doing snow plowing. And removing snow because of the number of people that were here in our lots. Uh and so that's another reason. And then the other issue that we've run into that's that's tied into this is. The amount of overnight parking, you know, we have specific areas for overnight parking. We've exceeded those areas. We're now starting to exceed the overflow areas in those peak period of times. And so all of those. Those reasons kind of combined together to kind of put us into that situation of. We gotta manage this parking because it's getting out of out of control and we owe it to those, our our patrons who have. Who are coming here to Alta that if they've purchased a product and and are coming to ski, that they at least can come up the canyon with the assurance that they have a parking space. That they have a reservation for or know in advance before they come up the canyon that they don't on the on that given day. Um it's there, it was. You know, one hard one last year was we had a a woman with her three kids that tried to go to Brighton and got turned around and then came all the way up Little Cottonwood Canyon. Spent four hours in their car trying to find a parking spot and it was on one of those days when we were full and and turned away. And that was tough. So we've been, you know, we we went out last spring and we, as we announced that we were going to move to. To parking uh reservations and paid parking were different than solitude. You know, solitude could just implement paid parking and when it's full, they can still park five hundred cars on the highway. We don't have that luxury here. You know, when we're full, we're full. And and so that's why we had to add the reservations component into particular to it. And you know, that goal of that, our goal really is, is as was mentioned. People make the decision to come online, they make that reservation in advance before they get here. Um I want to offer my appreciation to the town, to Mayor Sandak, Chris Colley and Mike Mori in particular. As we've tried to configure and work through the details of our parking and and help me impact the town, um. They have spent countless hours uh in discussions and with us and as we've bounced ideas and modified and. I would tell you, we have some concepts, but we are still, to some degree, dotting i's and crossing t's to how this is all going to work. The uh, as I mentioned, last spring, we went out and and kind of polled the the businesses and residents and cabin owners and tried to get a feel of. How much parking was being used. As a result of that, we quickly determined and realized that uh. The parking that was really available in the town of Alta, under the town of Alta management. Was inadequate to meet the demand and that uh. Ski area permitted parking would be new, would be needed to help accommodate uh the demand the way it's been used and and manage it. That's why we had moved forward with this idea of an MOU with the town of Alta. In which we would put, take a hundred and fourteen spots that we are currently in the special use permit. And put them under management of the town. And then of those hundred and sixteen, fourteen. Our request is that we'd be able to retain the use of sixty spots throughout the complete town, not just in the overnight area, not just in Grisly, but our sixty spots would be. Our sixty permits would be out through the town of Alta. And part of the request for those sixty spots was. That we are are trying to enter into agreements uh to. Trade uh some of those spots for private lands on the south side with the goal that we have. You know, permit parking all on the north side and all of the public uh reserve parking on the south side of the state road. So that's kind of been the intent. And the overall concept of where we've been going. Um we've, you know, been working hard to find a solution. The MOU has currently drafted, I believe, works. Um we do have some concerns at this point in time. About the proposed town of Alta permit plan that was kind of put together by the consultants. We think there's a. You know, there's kind of some little misunderstandings in there that uh we're not, I, we are not comfortable with at all at this point in time. Uh we're concerned that uh the plan is addressing the need maybe of. Primarily a residence, but it's it's not really addressing the need as was identified by Dale Draper. That they have a need for a cabin on a periodic basis. It's not addressing the need by some other cabin owners who have expressed that. But we don't need spots every weekend, but we maybe need more than one or two spots on particular weekends. Also concerned it's not truly addressing some of the business needs where. We have businesses that may have ten or fifteen employees, but need to share parking spots between them. And we haven't seen the detail for that. So we're we're concerned about that. We encourage the town to take those things into consideration. We're uh we're not comfortable also with how the uh parking spots have been allocated towards the lodging properties. It seems to. It's been an arbitrary number split even between them rather than looking at the the number of guests and employees needing to service those guests. And we also have concerns about trying to have a parking management system that's on only on on the north side. This for on weekends and holidays, what happens uh during the middle of the week with those parking areas? It seems like we've opened the door and invitation for uh. Or more or people to come early in the morning and to have spots consumed that would be expected to to be used in the overnight parking area. Uh in in the nighttime. That's one of our biggest concerns here is overnight parking has, we've got to manage that as part of that, and that's part of this uh. The reason this MOU is that the town would help in managing that overnight parking, but we need a system to manage it. Very concerned that if we issue, as the current plan is, over two hundred. Uh parking spots that could be used for overnight parking and there's only a hundred and forty-six available, that is problematic for Mark.
Mike, do you mind wrapping up? Sorry. Just, thank you.
Most.
Thank you.
Now, we have additional uh, our additional concerns are on this early morning parking time of day and how that will be enforced and. How we deal with the backcountry community. So as the ski area, we have, um we believe the interstate system has the capacity to address these concerns. Uh we'd like to work closely with the town of Alta. We believe we have a better way, as the mayor suggested. Here's a better way. Well, we we have a better way. We'd like to propose and talk to the town in detail and try to address these concerns. And it may include actually increasing some of the parking that may be available uh for day parking. And so we're interested in sitting down and working this out quickly because time is running out and uh. Would like to have the staff and the town, whoever's involved, and invite even. Some of the shareholders to be in this process because it's a. It's where we are today uh. Has the potential to be worse than better on the night, on the right side from our perspective, as what's been uh presented and and we. I'm not very comfortable with that. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have, I have a couple of questions. If this is uh an appropriate time, Harris, I'm not sure.
Well, we're a little bit behind schedule. Um so why don't we? I don't know if you could do, uh would it be, eh, would you be able to deal with those offline or are they something that need to be aired in the public uh forum of the town council?
Um I think they're quick. The term of ASL's contract with the Icon and also the term of ASL's contract with Interstate Parking. And I think particularly the latter one influences potentially our contract.
We have a one-year renewable contract with Interstate. It will automatically renew for one additional year unless either party is chooses to terminate. Um as far as uh Icon, we are in discussions right now with Icon about extension of the current. We have, we're on it for this year, but our criteria for an extension is that we would be removed from the Icon base product. That we would be able to require reservations uh either through parking or for product. Uh those are two of the restrict, whether the requirements we have in any renewal. Uh we have also been in discussion with uh Epic under the same terms. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Mike. All right, next on our agenda is to hear from the UFA. We've got Chief Jay Torres in with us.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. Um. Just a couple of updates for UFA. So uh in regards to Station One Thirteen, they just recently completed some seismic upgrades to the station. Uh those included things, they were not all non-structural seismic updates, uh just to ensure that uh in the case that there. There is an earthquake, that that the station will still be operable and safe for those in there will be able to respond appropriately. That's something that we're doing. With all of our stations throughout the area, but One Thirteen was one of the ones that was just recently completed. Um I emailed a quarterly report to you all. Um I'll try to start doing that on a quarterly basis and in in the. The manner in which I did, which I think is a little more um demonstrative of of the things that were happening over the last quarter. So if you if you have any questions, you're welcome to email me. Or or give me a shout and I can explain, you know, what all of that means. Uh but I think it's, it it kind of is a better demonstration of me just saying, hey, we had this many calls uh last quarter. So. Uh you you'll be getting those uh just after each quarter ends um from here on out. Uh. We are getting ready to do our Little Cottonwood Canyon Clinic and Ski Patrol uh refresher meeting that will be towards the end of the month. Uh we'll get together with uh both Alta, the Alta Clinic and Alta Patrol, as well as Snowbird Clinic and Snowbird Patrol, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Talk about our operations for the season and and uh uh make sure that everyone is is working well together. Um. As far as COVID updates, we are still uh having issues with COVID. We, as an agency, we're doing really well comparatively with other. Uh other public safety agencies, both in the state as well as nationally. We're about ninety-one percent of our employees are fully vaccinated. Uh which is really high compared to other other agencies. Um we are going to be doing a booster clinic uh. Next month for all of our our personnel in an effort to to give people their third vaccination and and keep that immunity up. I've already received mine and and several of our employees already have, but uh we're just encouraging everybody to to maintain that vaccination rate. Um knowing that we are coming into your homes and your citizens and we want to make sure that we're keeping. The folks that were exposed to to us safe as well. Uh along those lines, unfortunately, we experienced a line-of-duty death uh on October thirty-first. We had a thirty-five-year-old. Um or excuse me, a thirty-five-year veteran who was active duty uh who died of COVID. Um he was fully vaccinated and uh he was. Had some some other health issues that may have contributed to uh to him getting sick, but uh he passed away on October thirty-first and just had his funeral. Last weekend, but uh I'm very um instrumental in our our department with, in many ways, went to nine eleven. And I think he served the the Salt Lake Valley and the communities we serve very well for the last thirty-five years. Um. That is it as far as UFA. Any questions for me?
Can we get definitions for the quarterly report that you sent us? And you can do this offline about what emergent is versus uh other incidents. I think the rest I probably understand, but.
Yeah, yep, I can email something out, Margaret.
Thank you.
You bet.
And thank you to you and all of your staff for. The way you always put your lives um on the line for each one of us and our condolences to you, of course, and all your team for that uh recent passing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. All right, uh the next item on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, including the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one council meeting. Minutes, Treasurers' Report and Staff Report. Is there a motion to um?
I move that we. That we uh approve the consent agenda as outlined by the mayor.
Is there a second? Um I'll second that, Margaret, since I'm not hearing a ground swell. Uh any discussion?
I did have two comments. One, I saw that there were some changes about the um. The minutes, uh and I'm referring to page four and page six in the consent agenda. I believe um and page four had to do with a new business item and there were some. Uh comments in blue that then got lined through and. Um I think that what was written there before the the crossing out actually is reflected by the minutes from that particular. Um second paragraph, and that's what I had raised at the last meeting, and that's why these minutes got uh pushed into this meeting is because I felt that they hadn't. Accurately reflected what was in the um meeting and is reflected in the. meeting and is reflected in the oral recording of that meeting. And then also on page six, there were comments made about a vacancy and an understanding having been reached and a reference to Town Council Member Davis that she looked at the December and January meeting minutes. And I think to not reflect those two particular comments which are in the recording in our minutes may give somebody an inaccurate impression of what occurred at our council meetings. And so, that's my motion would be to keep the amendment on page four that was proposed by me, not lined out as in the draft on page four. And then the second portion of that would be to, well, I'll do it in a second motion, but the second motion would be to amend page six to include that Mayor Sandek said an understanding had been reached and referred Council Member Davis to the December and January meeting minutes, and that relates to section two on page six.
I'm having a hard time exactly finding where you are, but I'm just on the webpage now because so you're talking about the Wednesday twenty-ninth minutes, right? The meeting of Wednesday the twenty-ninth?
Yes, Wednesday the twenty-ninth, and it's page four of our.
Oh, I see the way, okay. I I I see where the page numbers are. I was looking at the wrong page numbers. Okay. And so, but I don't see where something is lined out that you wanted kept in. That's what I'm confused about on page four. I'm sorry, Margaret. So, I'm just not following.
I think she's saying, he also stated that there will be a vacancy on the planning commission after the November election. And the mayor intends to send out a couple of names of possible employees, right? That's what you're proposing?
That's, that's what I had put in as the language I was requesting at the last meeting that we had to postpone because it was not available to the council. And so, that's what I understand was there, but then it got lined out now in what is attached for us in the consent agenda.
After listening to the recording a couple of more times, I did make the suggested changes, and I think they are accurate as added, but we can remove this minutes and we can try again if you, everyone wants to review them again for next month.
I'm, I'm sorry, Piper, you're saying that in listening to it, you did not hear the statement that's lined through? It's removed?
I'm saying that I put, I added the language, I believe, that is underlined there and is not crossed out off, sorry. Because that is how I thought what was said and what was reflected.
Okay, I guess I'm I'm lost when I made the request to make a change. I don't know now which change is mine, except that you're saying the underlying portion is what you added and what's lined out is either from the original or from my request to amend it?
Yes. That the lined out was the request that you had made. I mean, I guess we can argue if it's substantive. I I guess you did say that you think it's important to to state that, but.
Well, I I don't want to argue about it. That that wasn't the point. I, my original concern was that I thought the minutes is originally proposed to us for this meeting did not accurately reflect what took place at the meeting. I admit, though, that I have not reviewed that I have not listened to it again. I listened to it last month when I proposed this as a change. So, I am fully willing to go with your suggestion that you changed it based upon your listening to it. It was just that I thought, I thought the original was not accurately reflecting what occurred. So, if if you listen to it and that's the change you made from my change, I'm willing to go with that. But it was not clear from what was presented to the council, how all of these different changes occurred.
So, so Piper, are you confident that this paragraph accurately reflects the conversation at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I withdraw that the motion related to page four.
Okay, I'm not even sure you got to the point of making one, frankly, but but we'll, we'll move on. Is there, is there any other discussion about the minute, about the consent agenda?
So, then, the motion on page six relating to the second item, planning commission appointment to what is written there, both the original and in the blue underlining, I would move to amend to add the sentence, Mayor Sandek said an understanding had been reached and referred Council Member Davis to the December and January meeting minutes. Which, which is in there in the underlined. So, sorry, I'm, I've lost. I would draw that motion because it is there.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right. Anything else about the consent agenda? All right. Then all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
I apologize for taking time to do that.
Okay. Questions regarding departmental reports is what's next?
I wonder if Marshall Moore, he might have a ti- time to take us through through his response or his report with regard to activity in the town. Give us a moment to just gloss it as I look at the data.
Did you have a specific incident that you were?
I I like the way it's reported. I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm reading it accurately. If you wouldn't mind kind of going through the categories for me? If it, not trying to totally put you on the spot.
Well, please bear with me. I don't have the ability to put that on screen right now. Okay. Give me a second, I'll get there.
I can do that for you, Mike, if you'd like.
Would you please?
Yeah.
Got it to Jen if you need.
Well, let me start out by saying that I fully realize that this statistical report that we've been giving you recently is nowhere near as anecdotal and lighthearted as what we've done in the past. This is a, this is a product of the new records management system that you all authorized us to purchase. And it's given us an ability to track our activities in a way that we haven't been able to efficiently track before. So, we've broken down all of our different police functions into different offense or classification categories. You know, so had there been a theft, you'd see that on the report as well. Had there been other types of incidents, the database would automatically populate those in, and they would tell you how many of those had occurred. And whether there was an arrest involved would also be included in that. So, um.
Thank you so much.
I'm not sure if that really answers the question that you've asked. And one thing that I that I do want the council to be aware of is this is a summary of events that we've either been dispatched to or self-initiated to. This is not a complete painting of all of our activities. This doesn't take into account non-incident-related patrol time and in, you know, the other things that we do.
Can I ask you one question about this, Mike? Forest Service Patrol, when I have my radio on, I often hear one of the Marshals deputies saying, I'm headed up the the Summer Road. Is that?
Yeah, so we have, we have what's called a CISC agreement. The Forest Service does not provide law enforcement officers for regular patrol or enforcement in the town of Alta. They contract to the town for general law enforcement. We are given a, Piper, correct me if I'm wrong, a a small amount of money to cover our expenses, and we pretty much use that up the first week. And annually, the Forest Service will audit us and make sure that their money was well spent and ask us to provide an accounting of the time spent patrolling or responding to National Forest System lands. And so, that's why we've included that event classification in our report.
Okay, thanks. Sheridan, did you get your question answered?
Thank you so much. If I could drill down just a little bit, I'm curious about obviously, that's the largest number on the report. I'm I'm also curious about the watershed violations, including the camping and the hunting. If if you wouldn't mind speaking to those just a bit, I'm kind of curious how that all kind of falls under the purview of of all the many excellent things that you all do.
Well, thank you for that. You know, the the hunting is, you know, our efforts to keep people in compliance with our town ordinance, which limits hunting activities to archery hunting only in prescribed areas. So, when we make a contact for a hunting incident, it's usually because there is a violation occurring there. Most often, we can clear that call by giving the hunter some information. Oftentimes, they're not aware of the boundary. In extreme cases, we have worked with the DNR to prosecute illegal taking of wildlife. Watershed is a pretty all-encompassing thing. That can be anything from a dog in the watershed to prohibited camping. Even though it's not spelled out on this report, one of the watershed investigations we had during this period was somebody actually disposed of a motor vehicle engine off the Summer Road. And, you know, so we we do track that. We like to keep, so like, public utilities aware of our enforcement activities. Sometimes they'll they'll call and ask us what our stats are.
Well, that's bizarre. They'll have to put that in their own backyard next time, I guess.
Yeah, we were, we were hoping to get a VIN number off the engine. Unfortunately, one does not exist, so that that investigation is kind of dead-ended.
So, do we have a new sculpture for the town park?
No, I think it's, it's out at the appropriate recycle facility. The folks flying the avalanche control equipment were gracious enough to help us get it extracted from where it was found.
Okay, good. All righty. All right. We'll move on to the mayor's report. I don't, I have, it's pretty short. So, we're still, as as Chief Torgeson reported, you know, we still have people getting COVID. Today, it was, I looked it up just before the meeting, forty-seven per one hundred thousand in Salt Lake County, which is better than it's been at its worst, but it is, in fact, higher than in my report from last month, unfortunately. As everybody knows, we have, we're just in the process of completing an election. Congratulations to Roger. So, we know, since he ran unopposed, we know that outcome even before the certification and the final count. Currently, John Byrne and Carolyn Anstall look to have had the most votes for the two town council seats, but there are uncounted votes, ballots outstanding in Salt Lake County. Again, just before this meeting, I looked that up, and there's eight hundred and seventy outstanding uncounted ballots, and many fewer than that. That number of votes separates our town council candidates. So, we'll wait to see a little bit longer how that works out. The canvas to recognize the official vote tally is November sixteenth at four P M. On the nineteenth of October, I attended the UFA U F S A board meeting. The highlights of the activities, we're talking about the quarterly financial results. We, the UFA is going to have to hire a new chief. When Chief Peterson came on, he said he would serve until next spring, and that is what he's going to do. So, that process is just about to wind up, and we were talking about that. There was some discussion of three and four, or versus four-member crews. There's still a handful like Station one thirteen. Still a handful of crews that are three members, and a four-member crew allows a quicker entrance into an actual structure fire, because you can't do that on a three-member crew, and they have to call for a second crew. Put a pin in that idea. It's a good idea for for us, it seems to me, as a board member of UFA and now as a board member of U F S A, I would be promoting that. The the rub on that is that each, to increase each of the, I think it's four remaining three-member crews to a four-member crew, the 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 cost is about half a million dollars each. And there is already going to be, as I'm about to say, upward pressure on the U F S A member fees. So, that remains to be seen. It is not the highest priority for the UFA. The higher priority is to make sure we maintain our position in the top three. We've worked hard over the last years to get to the point where we are within the top three of the wage rates for the fire services in the county. There isn't, there is pressure on the wages for the firefighters like there is on many way, people's wages today, and especially because there's a lot of pressure on the police wages, which we'll be talking about here in a few minutes in our own town. There was a cost, there was a, I'll say something about that in just a second again, too. So, the cost share, the other item, the big item was cost sharing with the directly, the direct member municipalities, which are including Harriman Holiday and Riverton, Cottonwood Heights wasn't part of this for seismic upgrades to the stations in their towns. At the U F S A Finance Committee meeting on the first of November, which I chaired, we talked about budget issues for twenty twenty-two. And the member fee increase to cover some coming bonding costs about three years from now and for wage increases. I don't know if there's going to be a proposal immediately, not for, I I don't know when, but certainly by twenty twenty-three, there's going to be a member fee increase. It's very expensive to actually do a truth and taxation hearing for the U F S A. They have to send a letter to a a lot of people, and just the cost of doing that is forty thousand dollars. So, there's a a lot of good reason to have fewer but bigger increases if indeed those are going to happen at all. On the first, there was also a C W C board meeting where we talked about some amendments to the current year budget changes, thanks to contracting cha- changes in the contract for the Environmental Dashboard at the University of Utah, the visitor use study with Utah State. Revised interlocal agreement with the U for that dashboard and maybe the big news is, is that Ralph Decker informed us that he will be retiring this spring as the executive director of the C W C. So there will be a position open at the C W C. On the fifth, there was a board retreat. There was a review of accomplishments recently, but most of the focus is on where we were headed. The main issue there is, is that the Salt Lake County Council is a little bit dubious about the value proposition. They fund the C W C to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars. And Salt Lake City is a little unclear about the value proposition to them, too. They also contribute two hundred thousand dollars. The way that Mayor Mendenhall put the problem is that it does not look today like the mission of the C W C or the purpose that it's actually serving, I guess I should better say, is to implement the Mountain Accord, which is what the C W C was founded to do. And the reason that they are not any, we are not any longer clearly pursuing that purpose is because some of the parameters of the Mountain Accord seem to have been put behind us. In particular, the concern from Salt Lake City is the participation of the Alta Ski Lifts Company in what was the Mountain Accord parameters. Coming up on November sixteenth is a UFA U F S A board meeting at seven thirty in the morning, December sixth at three thirty P M. As a C W C board meeting on December eighth, we have a town council meeting. There were two temporary dog licenses issued since ten thirteen and this eleven seven twenty twenty one, one to Frank Knapp and one to Sophie Danforth. So that's, that's what I've got for us today. Okay, so now we can get back to like actual, some trying to move forward. One question, the first and the next item is discussion possible action to authorize me as mayor to execute an M O U with the Alta Ski area regarding winter parking plans.
May I just ask a really brief question about Mayor Mendenhall's assessment of the C W C's role right now? Do you agree with that?
I agree that the C W C is no longer in the position to move toward the implementation of the Mountain Accord. That seems correct to me. Is that, is that the question you're asking? I want to be clear. I want to be sure that I'm answering what it is you want to know from my perspective, Sheridan.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's part of the question. I also wonder if you think her critique is accurate with regard to our abilities to negotiate with the Alta Ski Lifts Company.
Well, as I understand the Mountain Accord, and there are people on this call who are more familiar with all of those details, probably, although they may be rusty on some of it, too. You know, protecting grizzly gulch was part of the arrangement, as was moving forward on a national conservation recreation area. And this Alta Ski Lifts Company has removed grizzly gulch from the discussion, which puts, from the point of view of Salt Lake City, puts them in the, it puts, I'm just going to look up a text exchange I had. Hang on a second. See what I can share about this. Salt Lake City doesn't, and there was a question about water contracts and snow making water. And from Salt Lake City's point of view, that was tied in with the protection of grizzly gulch. So I did pose the question. What if grizzly gulch isn't protected? What does that have to do with snow making water? And the answer I got was Salt Lake City doesn't want to increase surplus water contracts in any case, but especially when they're used to support increased development and ski area expansion. So we need to see a benefit in protection to agree to expansion of the water that gets delivered.
And forgive me for a follow up question. Do you think the National Conservation Recreation Area is sort of dead in the water at this point in terms of moving forward?
There is not a member of Congress, well, John Curtis is not at the present time inclined to bring that before Congress, and he's a Republican. And currently, Congress is controlled by the Democrats, so he would need some partners. I suppose that although I might not think it was worth the trade, if the Republicans take the House in the fall next year, then John Curtis may be in a different position. Assuming he gets reelected and assuming that we're in his district, all of which I think is up for grabs. Okay. So let's talk about the discussion of possible action on the M O U. The main idea here is to allow, I want to just make sure that the council is not unclear on one important point. It is not the case that we are allocating sixty parking permits to the ski area that we otherwise would be able to hold on to. There are a hundred and fourteen is my best estimate, our best estimate. There are a hundred and fourteen. Chris, feel free to correct me. There's a hundred and fourteen spaces that the ski area is going to allow us to manage that otherwise they would manage as part of their being on their special use permit. Of that hundred and fourteen, they want to hold back sixty permits. They aren't making a specific request about where those sixty permit holders would necessarily be parking. So we are looking at a net gain of fifty four spaces by making this arrangement with the ski area compared to if we were to say to the Alta Ski Lifts, we don't want to make this deal. Now, part of this deal, as it was framed in the beginning, was that we needed to have a permitting system as part of our management contribution in the town to make this deal. They wanted a permitting system throughout all of what we're going to manage. So it's not, it's not accurate, and I've tried to correct this one. I've heard it, that we are somehow giving up sixty spaces. What we're doing is we're gaining fifty four spaces out of the hundred and fourteen that are on that special use permit. Chris, you want to correct anything there?
No, I think you've got it.
I've been frankly sleeping, I mean, I've been having nightmares about these numbers, so I'm pretty familiar with them, but I, it is confusing. There's no doubt about it. Our, our goal is to, and I don't think this M O U demands a specific parking allocation plan, really. That's still, we're still listening to people. We're still trying to work out some details of that. We know that time is short. We value the, I'll just give you one, one, I mean, it's confusing because there are contradictory needs, and that's what makes this, and there's a technical term in my field. It's a wicked problem because there's not a good solution. And the demands of the parties are really in conflict. You know, the homeowners want more spaces, but so do the, so do the lodges and one lodge is happy to have us allocate equally and other lodge wants us to allocate by some complicated formula of combination of of beds and employees and, and, you know, some of the lodges have a different bed to employee ratio, and maybe that was something we considered too, to encourage efficiency, but really, we decided that wasn't our business. That's the business of, of, of the private business to manage themselves. So we went around on a lot of different options. One reason why we did open this up for a weeknight for why we limited the scope down to just the three weekend days was precisely the idea that people need to be able to park more than one car at a time. And we thought we could accommodate that at least some of the time. We thought we could accommodate more needs than the twenty five spots for the lodges that we have in our draft proposal, for example, by doing this. So it's, it's not the case that we are not paying attention. But it is the case that we're getting lots and lots of conflicting requests. But none of that's really in this M O U anyway. This M O U. Chris, do you want to tell us what's in the M O U? Summarize it if, just to make sure it's in this record?
Sure, the M O U, you know, within the M O U, the ski area agrees to assign control of a portion of the special use permit between the Snow Pine Lodge and the end of the current overnight parking area in the grizzly lot to utilize, it's not about the managed parking. That's term A. The second is the town's agreement to allocate sixty permits from within the town managed areas to Alta Ski Area. And, you know, Alta Ski Area furthermore agrees not to designate more than sixty users to those permits. I mean, that's kind of a technical detail related to some capability we'll have in the interstate system to assign multiple, you know, to associate multiple vehicles or license plates with the, with a permit. But so anyways, you know, the second of the three terms is is that assignment of sixty permits. And then the third is the Alta Marshals Office Agreement to continue patrolling Alta Ski Area parking lots and assist with public safety issues, just kind of to maintain historical practice there. The term is, I think we need to have a discussion about the term. The, the document, the document that was circulated does have a typo. Describes the term as concluding in May of twenty twenty one, which of course is in the past. I believe the intent is for the term to expire in May of twenty twenty two.
Just let's check in with Cameron on that, since he was drafting this. That's what this should say, right, in, on number four on page two?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, after reading the same document multiple times, I just sort of glossed over that, but that's a typo.
We should help you with that, Cameron. My apologies. You know, I would back up, I mean, it's important to acknowledge that we do still need a special use permit. It describes that the M O U is subject to the Forest Service authorizing a permit, but I don't know that that means we can't execute this M O U with the permit, with the forest still kind of out there. It does also, in section five, speak to this, we've been going back and forth consistently of late with the ski area about how the ski area will notify the town of, you know, whom it might allocate those sixty permits to, and that continues to be a priority for the mayor. And something will work this gear on. So those, those are, that's what I highlight from the M O U for you. So I think Elise just muted. No.
I, I think you addressed my question, Chris, about the north side in terms of UDOT and Forest Service, that we still have additional documents that we may need and that this is just a step in the process and there's additional steps. But in terms of the sixty spots, I understood from both you and Harris earlier that those sixty spots are not in the overnight area necessarily, although some could be. Is that right?
And I, I think I can speak to that, if that's all right.
Please.
So the reason that language is in there regarding the sixty spots is we wanted to restrict the ability to over assign or over allocate those amounts. You know, for any one specific date. So sixty of those spots can be located anywhere within the town area. So the ski area is going to allocate those, the ability to get those permits to sixty entities, and then those entities are going to go to the town to get the permit. And so the town will control how those folks get their permits, what, under what conditions, et cetera. And so that, the language is simply there to only allow the ski area to allocate sixty permits.
Really, what they're doing is identifying sixty permit holders, and then we will issue the permits.
And then is that limited in paragraph five that the ASL will notify the town of any changes to the allocation? That change in the allocation is not a change in allocation number, so that it never exceeds sixty, even though you're talking about the ability to over allocate is reserved to the town, not to the ski area. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. The, the change in allocation has to deal with the ski area's ability to allocate those permits as, as they see fit for those sixty permits, because in truth, the way, the way the mayor and Chris described it is accurate. Those sixty never left control of the ski area. And so they're theirs to do with as they see fit. And so, but we, for consistency sake, we wanted the town's permit parking on the north side to be through the town and then the ski area's permit on the south side to be through the ski area, so that, to avoid confusion. And so that's why the permits are going through the town. But, but the ski area has the ability to allocate those sixty as they see fit.
And then do we need a definition of lot? Because in, in paragraph two C, we talk about the Marshals Office is going to patrol ASL parking lots, but it seems to me, maybe it's maybe it's just this map that is exhibit A, but the lots are way beyond that. So am I missing something here?
So no, that's, so all of these ordinances and contracts were drafted at the same time. And so some of those details hadn't been worked out, but the lots would essentially be the areas on the map that are identified in the quasi-public parking ordinance. And so that's, those are the lots or the streets that, that were going to be, that the Marshals Office is going to be patrolling. And so that's what that's referring to in paragraph C.
Which is different than the map that's attached to the M O U.
Yes, because the M O U is dealing with the transfer of the areas that are controlled by the ski area in exchange for, and maybe it makes sense to include the, the quasi-public parking ordinance map here as well. Now that you mention that, but there, I mean, all of these things are interrelated, and so it's hard to, to take just one document, you know, with the four corners of that document and understand what is entailed in it.
Yeah, and it might be worth pointing out to the council that the ordinance twenty twenty one oh nine refers to an M O U in the ordinance, if I remember that right. Isn't that right, Cameron? I think so.
Yes, yeah, in the, in the whereas.
Yeah, yeah. So, so if we were not to do this, we can't really have a, I don't know what we can do on the other. But they go together, I guess, is the point, actually. This is part of a whole new system. So, I mean, I would entertain a motion to authorize me to, what is the language, to execute the M O U with the Alta Ski Lifts. authorize me to, what is the language, to execute the MOU with the Altoski lifts?
Don't move.
Okay. Second?
Oh, second.
All right, is there further discussion or have we had enough discussion on this?
Yeah, the last thing was just the term, and I think we may have talked about this the one year versus extending it automatically and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to hear more discussion about that.
Well, we have to agree to extend it. If the parties agree to continue this MOU, it shall extend for the next year. So there's a there's a default, well, there's two, I think there's two things. One is kind of the background assumption is this will go on, but only if we agree that it will go on, otherwise we can just stop it. And um, but I would amend this uh MOU to have, let's, I don't know if I can just stipulate this, that this is through May thirty first, twenty twenty two. Because that's a typo.
And is there a reason that this is through the end of May? And yet the other things seem to be through the ski season or something like that? Is there some rationale for those different quote ending dates for those things?
It really came down to, we didn't know what those end date uses will be necessarily. So because this MOU is for the transfer of the area, we just figured we would go to when we thought it would end. The ski area may be shorter, but we would still have use of this area if if it needed to go beyond that.
But our permit program is not slated to go through May in any case. I mean, the the draft, I I should just continue to use the word draft. Our draft permitting program does not include a a May end date, it ends in April. Like the ski areas. But you can imagine that, I I don't know, maybe we get a ton of snow and we have so many after the ski area closed, we need to manage the backcountry skiing, who knows? Stranger things have happened, right?
That that's what one of the things I was thinking about is that maybe the ski area closes quote unquote, but then there are a lot of people skiing backcountry and even in the ski area if when it's allowed. And it may end up with a parking issue.
Right, and you can imagine a situation where there's some, I I don't know, now I'm just speculating, but there's some reason that the park, one of the parking lots at the ski area has to be closed and therefore pushing those those May skiers get pushed up onto all right, um, so we have a motion to uh on the table to authorize me to move forward with this. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, uh, discussion of possible action now is uh on the twenty twenty one oh nine traffic enforcement and quasi-public roads and parking areas. That's the next item on our agenda. It's kind of funny that we passed ten before we passed nine, but doesn't really matter. We couldn't pass this one because it refers to the MOU, we couldn't pass this before we talked about the MOU, so. Is there a uh, anybody want to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty one oh nine? Okay, we've got, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give that to Elise in a second to Cliff. Further, further discussion from our work session discussion? Or anything new that's occurred to you?
The only thing which I I mentioned to Chris, and I apologize, Chris, I haven't had a chance to look at your email that came in just as the meeting started. Whether or not we we want to use the term owner for uh, in in a whereas clause, a couple above now therefore uh ASL as owner and special use permittee. Is that because there is land specifically owned by ASL privately versus the special use permit? Is that why we're using that?
There's a little bit of that, I believe.
Yeah, there is that, so those terms uh were really uh in interstate's boilerplate. And I agree with you, and I'm happy to meet with you about uh your questions. And because I think some of those could be clarified, it's just all of these agreements were happening at the same time.
I I think we're talking about the ordinance, though, are we?
We're talking about the ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about the ordinance, so and Margaret's question is, does the ordinance? Am I right, Margaret, are you, do you mean to inquire about the use of uh the word owner and the?
Second to last, whereas.
Right, whereas ASL as owner and special use permittee of this area agree. Um, and so the verb tense is strange, but um that the area in exhibit A is subject to the the specific code section dealing with quasi-public roads. So it's because that particular land area is both for a service special use permittee to the lift company and the lift company owns it, uh, fee simple as well, proportions.
Well, it's not as though all of the special use permit is also owned by the ski area, clearly, right? They have a special use permit on land they don't own, and then there's a little bit of land that they do own. Right, Cameron?
Yeah, and 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 that was also part of this Utah statute requires that property owners, all property owners uh or the majority of the property owners agree to the quasi-public uh parking enforcement. And so that's partly why that language is in there. But yes, it does refer to the ownership rights or the absolute ownership of the land.
And we have no uh quasi-public that relates to other lands. Potentially lands owned by the Alta Lodge or Rustler or anybody else that would need to be encompassed in that, I mean, we we've left them out apparently specifically, so.
Yeah, so the statute, the reason we've left them out at this point is because the statute requires that we have an agreement in place with with the owner or the the owners in interest and a public hearing before we pass an ordinance. And the only entity that we have that agreement with and a public hearing on is without the ski lift area at this point. And so those other additional areas could be added, but we would have to have an agreement and a public hearing on those areas.
And there's no agreement, obviously, necessary for the the land that the town owns, uh, that would just be encompassed period because we own it.
Right, that would be in the town's inherent police authority to to govern.
Okay, good questions, I think, to clarify. Any further discussion or shall we call this question and move on? I'll do that. All those in favor of uh adopting ordinance twenty twenty one oh nine, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, good, we can move to the next item on the agenda. Discussion of possible action authorize the mayor to execute a contact contract with uh interstate parking to administer and regulate town of Alta's winter parking permit program. Parking contract is what that would be. Okay. Is there a uh motion to allow me to do that, to authorize me to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion.
It seems that there's a number of things that need cleaned up about this contract. It 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 strikes me as boilerplate for parking garages. Um, there are a number of typos on page four. The term, I think, should be questioned. I can't see why we would want to enter into a con- contractual relationship for longer than one year. So I I have a number of quite serious concerns about the contract itself. The the idea that we are incentivizing in any way interstate to um ticket people and keep the lion's share of the proceeds, I think, is problematic. These are just some quick serious concerns I have about the way the contract has been drawn up.
Can I address the ticketing issue, please?
Yes, please.
At the advice of our attorney Cameron, we dove into that issue pretty deeply. The first read of the contract allowed for interstate to uh retain all of the citation proceeds. Cameron and I are both old enough and been in law enforcement long enough to remember the old days of photocop when predatory enforcement occurred. So what we've moved into was a uh negotiation with interstate to give the town some oversight um on the citation process. And that's why you see language in there about the first five. And then what happens after the first five is to uh put us uh a safety mechanism in there against predatory enforcement.
Yeah, I'll add that um the uh, I think that the reason they were willing to do this is because they don't expect there ever to be more than five.
The only other comment that I've got on that is interstate is a pretty robust company. They manage their citation uh payments and appeals center because they have to provide acting as an agent of the town for due process well staffing and tech support for that function, which has been their historic argument to retaining a share of citation proceeds.
Does, does the idea that they won't create a lot of citations comport with your experience here, Mike?
I I have every faith that um in enforcement is not their uh goal here that achieving um the right utilization of parking is the goal.
Thank you. I wondered if I could have a clarification question answered by Cameron, too, with regard to their definition of first class employee that I see show up a couple of times. And yet I'm not really clear what that means, although, of course, we want first-class employees.
Yeah, so we did have some discussion on further refining that. Uh, and essentially what that mean, that term means uh is that interstate will agree to uh, select a qualified applicant that will provide customer service, that will perform the job, you know, reliably, et cetera. It it, we didn't, the town didn't want as a policy decision to get involved in how much minutia would be involved in hiring that. We just wanted interstate to provide employees um that would be able to do the job. And so we have had uh the town, myself included, Chris, the mayor, and the marshal. We've talked with three other towns that uh have used interstate, uh, that are resort, you know, mountain type towns. Um, we talked at length with them about the type of employees that they hired, how they administered their program. And we were comfortable, given the feedback from those other towns, um, that the employees that they're going to provide uh will be quality employees, and we felt comfortable with that language. Uh, we also asked those other towns how interstate has been to work with as far as addressing concerns or making adjustments in the town. And they all reported that they were uh very flexible and easy to work with and resolved all the concerns. And so uh, at least, you know, given that feedback, we felt like it was it was appropriate to use the language that's in the contract to cover that. If there are concerns, we obviously would address that, and there's language in the contract to allow us to address those concerns. And so that's why, that's why we made it that way it is.
Thank you so much, and I'm taking the lion's share, so I want to see the floor. Just if you could look, and thank you for that work. What other towns do you consult with, if I might ask?
Uh, so Idaho Springs, Colorado, Green Mountain Valley, and
Breckenridge, I think.
And Chris, you do?
And I think, I think this is the company that's enforcing uh in Big Cottonwood Canyon as well, or managing in Big Cottonwood Canyon. It also is the company, we we did put out a, I don't remember the right language. Did we put out an RFP or a call for something? I don't remember what scale it was, I think it was an RFP. Because we wanted to make sure we were following our own uh policy, but also to, you know, see if there was another firm that was a better fit for us. Of course, part of why um this company is willing to do this with an expected return of, you know, they're going to get something like thirty thousand dollars in gross in their revenues is because they're going to be in our canyon, working for the Altoski lift company anyway. Uh, they did ask us originally, they wanted us to charge substantially more than we are our draft proposal has for uh fees. So I think aren't really in it exactly for the big bucks that they're going to get out of us.
And I would just add, Mayor, you know, I participated in most of those calls with, um, you know, peer cities and this is not an easy thing to reflect in a contract. Um, and the contract might not reflect this at all, but all all of the like assistant city managers and um police department folks who we spoke with, who work with this company said that they were like flexible, they were looking to make the program work. They're focused on like non-confrontational customer engagement. And so their clients generally seem to be happy with them and express that they're, you know, flexible and building these programs. If that's worth anything.
Okay, well, we we uh, we have a motion on the table uh before us, so um maybe we can call this question.
Uh, that, this may be um I mean, Chris knows I and probably Cameron as well, I had a lot of comments about this particular contract. I don't know if those are things that um I think, Cameron, you offered to do some of these things offline with me. I don't know how many of them need to be done before we look at this, nor do I want things necessarily hold up the town and tie Mike Maury's hands any tighter than they're already tied. Um, but I'm wondering if could this be something that uh, the council considers either in a special work session in a week or so? To give this to us on Friday and I submit questions and don't get an answer yet. I I don't know how I can good, in good conscience, um, support it without some kind of uh ability to satisfy those questions. And yet I understand that we've got a time limit uh on this particular uh topic item.
Yeah, I think that's a fair question, and and that's simply just a factor of all of these things that are interchangeable and related. But um, I I think as long as the council is comfortable giving the mayor authorization to enter a contract with interstate under the terms, I I think that I've I've looked through your questions just briefly because I just got it before the the meeting today, but I do, I don't see any of those that would change the material terms as far as what the contract uh requires from interstate or from the town. Um, so I certainly can follow up with those, you know, tomorrow with you and and see if we can resolve that. As far as the contract, we're just looking for the mayor to have the ability to enter that uh contract with interstate.
Well, enter a contract, actually, it doesn't have to be this, exactly this.
And and so I do think interstate would be willing to change some of the terminology of the the wording that is in there.
Okay, it's part of my concern. Sorry to interrupt you, Councilmember Burke.
Okay, Paul, uh, hang on just a second, Margaret Polly, what did, what did you want to interject?
Going to offer that part of the motion could be to authorize you to enter into a contract that is materially the same, but that so that uh some of these non-material issues can be resolved. Councilmember Burke, satisfaction.
Yeah, I I agree, I think, I agree, I think that's the right approach um that the the motion uh be amended um to authorize uh the mayor to enter in the contract um according to the material terms uh of the contract that's before us today.
It seems to me a material term of the contract has to do with the termination of it. And as I read it, if either party does not terminate, the agreement continues. And as I read it, if either party does not terminate, the agreement continues. And it seems to me that's material.
Cliff, I think you just made a motion to amend.
Yep.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that motion. So now what we are, we've just, we have before us an amendment to the motion. And the amendment is to include the language that Cliff just articulated about. The authorization is to execute a contract that is materially, did you say the same as, I can't remember the exact language.
Well, I, I would say according to the material terms of the, the document that's before us.
Okay.
We could, you know, yeah, this contract has an auto renewal in it. I think we understand how those work. You know, not to get too deeply into it, but, you know, the material term is the important term of the agreement that makes a difference whether the party's going to enter into the agreement or not.
Okay. So let us first vote on that amendment to say that I'm authorized to enter a contract that includes these material terms. And then we can vote on the main, that's what the amendment says, to add that, that section, that clause. Is that clear to everybody?
Sorry, it's, it's not to me. So it's still not clear to me if we're voting on this amendment about the material terms, if the term of the contract is considered material. The length of what we're signing.
I, I would say yes. The term of the contract is material.
Okay, because that's, that's maybe my most critical critique of, of the current contract. I don't know why we want to enter as a town a contract that is more restrictive for us than what the Alta Ski Club company has with Interstate. First and foremost, I don't see why we wouldn't try and be in lockstep with that at a minimum. But I'm not sure how to address that in terms of the amendments that have been put forward.
Hey, I'm, I'm just going to remind us that we're now at six, just about six o'clock. And we still have a couple of items on our agenda to get through. So by saying the material terms, Cliff, you were making this more restrictive than simply to pass the main motion, correct? Because the, whatever I, you're authorizing me to enter into a contract so long as it includes these material terms.
Yep, and, you know, I think that would be done in consultation with the town's attorneys to determine which are the material terms. But there's, there is a lot of language in the proposed contract that is not material. That is, you know, drafting typos, as Councilmember Burke pointed out, those are not material. And I'd suggest that that's according to the discretion of the mayor and the town's attorneys to work those out. I could defer the attorneys on this, but I'd say that material terms would be price, subject matter of the contract, and yes, the term of the contract.
Okay. All right, so let's vote on this amendment to the language of what I'm being authorized to do. And so the, we're going to vote on adding, so long as we retain these material terms. So all in favor of that amendment to the main motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Oppose.
Okay, Sharon, it looked like you, okay, so it's a vote of three to two, so that amendment is adopted. Now, the main motion is, we can vote on that. Are you authorizing me to execute a contract with Interstate Parking to administrate and regulate town Alta's winter parking permit program with these material terms? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose.
Okay, four, that was four to one with Margaret voting no. Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda then is discussion of possible action to authorize an increase in wages for the town marshal's department. I sent you a memo about that as soon as I could, but it's been a very busy, it's been a very busy fall for me. And so let me, let me share this document that I created. Okay, you should be able to see this. This starts off with first the narrative discussion about why I think we should do this. And Mike is on, on the call here, of course, Mike Maury. So I, there are some facts to be discussed, and I'll show them to you here on the table. As you know, we're losing one and likely two marshals. I'm just concerned we would not be able to replace them if we don't move forward on this. So this is a table, I, I, I don't, I did not call each and every one of these agencies to verify these numbers, but I'm confident that we are low. And so here is our current average, which is, you know, our average tenure is well above the starting police officer. And even if they don't increase at all in Salt Lake County, we are below that. And my anticipation is, in this side of the table, I show an increase of 10% across the board. But that's too low for UPD. They're going to be moving up into the high 20s. So this average is conservative about what they will be. And you can see that the VEC dispatchers are well above our dispatcher salaries too. So I'm proposing an increase. And then the, the other page in here shows you where that money would come from. And what I show on this table is, stop moving, is here are, are revenues that don't, our revenues don't have anything to do with our police. Hang on, I, this thing is just not behaving the way it should.
It's zooming on you.
Well, it's moving around. Okay, here we go. So, you know, we have some expected revenues that are higher than what we expect. We now expect revenues higher than, in certain categories than we expected when we put the budget together. And those categories are here. We'll have an amended budget for you at the next town council meeting, but they'll reflect these kinds of differences. Although I can't promise that they'll be exactly here, because we'll update that with whatever new information we have. But as of today, this 90,000, this 91,000 includes rev, expected revenue from parking. So the bulk of this difference is being made by the parking, which also, of course, is increasing in many ways the burden on, on the officers. Just so that this is complete, I show our expected costs. Our expected expenditures, for example, are a little bit higher in some categories. They're a little bit lower in some categories. Overall, we now expect our expenses to be $5,600 more than we were expecting in June. And the difference between the change in expected revenues and the change in expected expenditures is about $56,000. And the salary increase for the marshal's office that I'm proposing for the rest of this year would cost us about $65,000. So most of that money is being paid for already with the expected increase in revenues. The small difference, I would propose that we go back and we make some, some small adjustment to the assumptions of our sales tax revenue, because of course, it's the bulk of our revenue. And we've been quite conservative about that. And as I said in my memo to you, I would expect to have a conversation with the lodge owners and the, or the lodge managers in the ski area about, you know, before the next town council meeting, say in, say in two weeks, if I were to go to the lodge managers and say, how do your bookings look? They'll be able to give me an answer to that question.
Well, excuse, excuse me, Mayor, but I, I can tell you that we're optimistic speaking on behalf of Alta Lodges now, I can tell you that we have, we're optimistic and we have a lot of reason to be optimistic for the coming season.
Good. And, you know, we, we went back and forth as a council when we put together that budget about how conservative to be. We didn't know how the pandemic was going to be. Of course, we still don't know how snow is going to be, et cetera, et cetera. But we, we have traditionally, certainly since I've been mayor, we've been quite conservative on our sales tax estimates. So to raise those by a little bit is, is, it's, to raise it by the $10,000 or $9,000 difference here is really a small difference. So that's what I'm requesting, is the ability to do that.
I move that we give the mayor the authorization to do that.
Is there a second? Thank you. Is there a further discussion?
Can you explain the difference in the figures with regard to revenue? When you cite, I think it's, it's not before me right now, but 96,400 gross, I believe. But we're expecting, if the majority of that is actually from the parking situation, there we go. Thank you.
About, well, that 90,000 in, right up here, under, under licenses, that 91,000, that 91,000 includes the 33,000 that we're estimating to bring in from parking.
Sorry, I thought you were saying that that entirety was what you expected from parking. Maybe I misheard.
No, we're expecting 33,000 from parking, and that's part of that 90,000. Yep.
With increase in sales tax. Thank you.
Yeah.
And to frame my comments, I'm in full support of paying as much as we can afford our excellent, excellent police force. I wondered if I could ask Mike a bit with regard to his exit interview with the one person who's left, if, if there are not two confirmed at this date, was salary the driving force?
I want to be a little careful here because we're talking about a human resources issue.
Sure.
So I'm going to tell you, general, yeah. I, I want to tell you, generally speaking, yes, the, the compensation and benefit structure is always a concern for our staff. Additionally, the job stressors that have occurred over the last two or three years are driving people out of this profession in droves. You know, we've got a great relationship with our town. And it's taken a long time to build, and we want to keep that. And key to that is retaining our, our people. We also see 6,000 people a day at peak times come into Alta with different belief systems and different attitudes and different views of the police. And that has been beyond challenging. We, we're consistently, through our dispatch center and out on the road, trying to mitigate very high-level conflicts over very low-level violations or scenarios. And you know, humans are behaving differently. And I think it's fair to say that's all made us, it's made us all look inward. And, you know, we've got a lot of people that are at the midpoint of their careers. And this is the time that they're really thinking about, where do I end my career? I talk to everybody daily, and it is a common theme, and boy, I hope I can keep doing this, or, you know, I'm not sure I can keep doing this. You know, and at, at the end of the day, you know, your, your job satisfaction is, is tied to what you're able to earn and what kind of life that can give you and what you can do when you're away from work. And so I guess that's a really roundabout way of saying, yes, our, our wage and benefit package is, is on everybody's mind. And I've had some conversations with some of our other people that have not tendered resignations. And they've, they've been real candid about what, what might keep them around, and, and compensation is all part of that. You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's easy to say, if you pay me more, I'll do this. But it's a lot easier to continue doing this if you have a quality of life that, that balances what you do.
Yeah, I have spoken to other mayors in Salt Lake County. And there is, I, I can, I can, I'll second what Mike said about people in public safety and policing leaving their positions at very high numbers. And, you know, they're talking about 15, 20% increases in many, many agencies. It's been a tough, it's been a tough couple of years to be a police officer. And, you know, what, one thing that we need to be able to hire replacement or two, but also we don't want people saying, you know what? If I, if I want to be a police officer, I can get a job at UPD or Cottonwood Heights and get paid a lot better.
This isn't directly part of this question, but I'd like the mayor and council to consider the entire compensation and benefits package at, at some point for the, all of the town employees, marshals, dispatchers, and all the So it's, it's not part of this. This is only the, the wage package. But I think that, as, as Mike commented, the total package is really important for us to consider because quality of life affects all of that.
Right. I absolutely agree with you, Margaret. And I've, I've had some conversations with the staff over the years about some aspects of it. And our police don't get the benefits that some other police officers in other age, larger agencies get. And, and you're right about that. You know, when I, in conversation with Catherine Cantor a couple of years ago, she said, you guys could save money by joining UPD. And we went down there and they looked at our salaries and our benefits, and they were like, that's not, we're not going to save you any money. So I agree with that. And at the ba, at the end of the memo that I wrote you, I said, you know, as part of the budget amendment for next month, I'll be back potentially with a, a bigger story. It's just that these are complicated issues. This, some of this certainly, Margaret's going to fall to the next mayor.
The next council.
And the next council, right. Okay, so we call the question?
Sure. My only concern is that we might not be doing enough with what you proposed. And, and we only had one day to look at your numbers, Mayor. So I, I wonder if, I'm, I'm in hearty support of both the literal numbers that you presented us with and also this effort. I just wonder if we need to do more, and that's not precluded by what we could do today. But since we've only been able to see these for 24 hours, I wonder if there is a way that we can, as suggested by potential new incoming councilman, John Byrne, create a, a cost of living increase floor of 10% a year for the next three years as part of this. You know, things that, I'm, I'm just, I am in full support of making us not the bottom. And, and I'd love to be the top with regard to And, and I'd love to be the top with regard to all of this, but part of me gets anxious when it comes to major financial decisions and attempting to act as a fiduciary for the town. When I haven't really been able to scrutinize this and I'm being asked to make a decision within a, a less than 48 hour period. And this is the largest budget item that we have within our budget. So I know I question that salaries need to come up and it's well deserved, but I also could wish that we could have looked at this a little bit more comprehensively and possibly with a bit more time, come up with a better
I would request that we go forward with this today. And if in the January town council meeting with the new town council members, you'll be continuing on the council, Sheridan, I would invite you to to, to further refine the, the situation. But I'd like to be able to do this now so that as part of Mike's recruiting effort, he has something to say.
Mayor, if I could add to the council that the, you'll have more time to look at the overall budget. You're, you're approving this now in theory and Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're talking about this going into effect later in December. And and, and you'll be able, the council will be able to look at the overall effect on the budget and, and approve the numbers for real.
Thank you.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion to adopt this change in their, in the, in the marshal offices salary structure, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sure Mike is very appreciative, as are his staff members.
How we're, we're beyond grateful for the sentiments and the actions tonight. You know, it's, I know we're, we're past time, but you know, I'm consistently amazed what we are able to do with two people on duty. You know, one on the radio and one on the road and there's no amount of money that really equals what, what our men and women do. Sorry, I'm getting a little goofy.
Understandable. Okay. The next item on the agenda is going to be controversial, but it may be that we can dispatch it relatively quickly, but we'll see. I mean, I would hope that we can have an up or down vote on this. So I, it is my, I, I would like to point, I am appointing this Marin Askins to the Alta Town Planning Commission. And I ask for your, I ask the town council to accept that appointment, confirm it.
Second.
Okay, some discussion. I'm sure that people have opinions about this.
Well, as I raised at the last council meeting, I asked you directly, Ms. Sandak, how this falls under your purview? And legal opinion says that it does not. So I'm very curious as to why you're pushing this.
Well, one legal opinion says no, and other legal opinions, well, both legal opinions said, well, you can see both sides of the argument. So.
Shall I read the paragraph that directly states that his opinion suggests based on the way that the ordinance is written, that you do not have the authority to do this? You could have the authority had, perhaps you worked collaboratively to gain it.
So Sheridan, I guess what, I guess what I'm, if your view is that though, what's to say that any mayor can't appoint a planning commission member just because we did not come to a conclusion a couple of years ago that we reappointed Roger and continued? So I'm confused is that, that it's the mayor's right to appoint a planning commission member, but you're saying that right now it's not Harris's right. So I guess I'm kind of confused about how you read that. And I
It's the mayor's right with the
Sheridan, can you let, let, Elise, go ahead, let Elise finish and then we'll come back to you, Sheridan.
And I, that was one person's opinion on that paragraph in that email, but Polly also had another opinion, who is our legal counsel. And I mean, it is ambiguous how we have our stuff written. And it is something that in the next year, our new town council is going to need to address because I don't think we want to be put in this position again. But i- in my opinion, it's the mayor's right to appoint a planning commission member. I mean, whoever that mayor may be, right now it's Harris. And so I also support Polly's opinion of that reading of the law. And so you can have your opinion as well. But I also don't want to spend a ton of time arguing all of our personal opinions on how we interpret this. I mean, there's five of us on this council and there's a reason we vote for the, these things. And also it's our duty to do stuff like this. And we can't just keep pushing this stuff down the road. And also, you know, there's going to be other appointments that are going to come up on the planning commission in the next year. And I don't want us to keep having the same argument of every time there's a counting, a planning commission member that doesn't want to step down. And so I just want to make sure that we've moved past this. And so we can kind of clear the air, get this over with and, you know, move on. This was a hard topic a couple of years ago. It was one of the reasons why I almost didn't run for town council because I got so the accusations and it just wasted time. So we just need to do our duty. And whatever our opinions are, great, but we need to vote on this at some point.
Okay.
That you feel that this is a matter of opinion, Elise, but actually the ordinance is written to state that the mayor may appoint, which I fully agree with, with the consent and approval of the council. That's the critical part here. The entire debate last time was around the idea that the, your appointment Harris did not have our consent or approval. Your appointment this time also, if, if I may finish, might have the consent and approval with possibly a split vote, possibly not. This has nothing to do with the sterling, the sterling characteristics of the person that you'd like to appoint. Although I do want to point out that this is an employee of the Alta Lodge and Cliff Curry is the president of the Alta Lodge. And there are two other candidates that could also be eligible for this position, which we have not discussed. So it's not really a matter, Elise and all council of opinion that the appointment of someone to the planning commission is based, and this is written in our ordinance, on the approval and consent of the council. So that's, that's not up for debate. And so that you are trying to circumvent that Harris by ignoring the reality that Roger was reappointed because there was no one else appointed at the end of his last term, meaning he's holding a term of five years now. That does not allow you as mayor to override the reality that he has a seat that cannot be taken away. Now, we can discuss that further, but th- these are procedural matters that actually speak to how we enact democracy. And it's hugely important that we enact democracy in a clear and transparent way and hold ourselves accountable for that. Those aren't matters of opinion.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to say that I am here tonight asking for the consent of the council. That's exactly what this process is. First of all, second of all, I think the timing is reasonable because Roger will have to leave this position at the end of the year anyway. And, and, and third, I don't agree with you that there was a reappointment. There was a continuation. And as a matter of transparency and democracy and good government, I think it is essential that the town council owns this seat and not the incumbent in the seat. That's like saying, just don't certify the election results and I can stay president of the United States. It doesn't
That's absurd.
Well, in any case, you, you can say that, but I don't think so. I think, I think that there's actually some interesting parallels, but I'll withdraw the analogy. The, the point is, is that this, this is owned by the town council and the town council at any time could have, I, I could have appointed and the town council could have consented at any time in these last, this last year or whatever it's been, a year and a half, two years. So
Based on the legal opinion that your own legal counsel sought, that is not the opinion that was stated. In fact, it was explicitly stated that you do not have the right to create this appointment. If you'd like to force this through Harris, you can try. But I think that it, it dishonors our office and it dishonors you, the way that you're leaving this office. So feel free.
Your opinion is, is noted by me in any case, Sheridan.
I would, I would just, first of all, I would defer to Councilmember Burke, who hasn't spoken yet. I, I might like to say a couple more words.
Margaret, I think Cliff is inviting your, your comment.
Cliff, go ahead. I'll follow you.
I think the interpretation of the ordinance and the mayor's authority to appoint is a subject on which reasonable people can differ. I would like to speak to the qualifications and the integrity of Marin Askins, who's been nominated. And I would like to encourage all of the members of the council to direct their comments to the substance of the matters before us. And I don't think there is any basis to question the integrity of our colleagues. And I would request that any member of the council just stop any comments of that nature.
Margaret, if you'd like to make a comment or any, or, or if not, we can move on.
I want to speak directly to the language of our ordinance and I was concerned that this might come up again. And so in October, I communicated with the attorney for the Utah League and asked him for his opinion about our ordinance and potentially whether or not there would be a vacancy as on, on the planning commission. Not hearing from him, I communicated again with him over the weekend and asked for that information again. Not hearing from him yet a second time, I called his office today and again, asked for that information. But I see that in the information that was provided to us as protected attorney client, there is a, an email from that attorney which I think is was correctly characterized by Sheridan that said, you know, I, I think there are at least two interpretations, which is not unusual for lawyers to find different interpretations. But that the, reading the ordinance itself, that there's no reason to go to the argument to reconcile the ordinance with the language of the state policy regarding municipal law or policy statements that you could just use the ordinance language itself. And his conclusion was that the most judges would likely follow that route as well. So I'm not speaking at all about the qualifications of any potential planning commission candidates. I'm speaking only on the vacancy and the lack thereof on the planning commission at this time. And without a vacancy, I don't feel that there is justification for a mayor to appoint the same way that the mayor could not appoint for somebody whose term has not expired. And all of those questions were presented to the Utah League Council. And I don't know what else he may have had from other people, but I would very much like to communicate with him. And I'm not sure why he hasn't responded to me, but has communicated apparently with other people at, at the town. And understand this before we move forward. I, I don't think it's appropriate for us to set a precedent of when there is a lack of a vacancy to move forward to an appointment.
Okay. Well, we have a motion on the, before us, and I think we've all had a chance to speak to the merits or demerits of that motion. So I would propose that we call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so vote of three to two. So the ayes have it. Next item on our business is, on our agenda is new business. And then the next item after that is the motion to adjourn. So I'll move that we adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you.